Good afternoon. City of Lamarck, City Council's special agenda of March 11th, 2024. Notice is here by giving that the city council of the city of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a special meeting on March 11th, 2024, beginning at 4:00 PM, Council Chambers at 11:09 B. Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. In accordance with section 551.127B of the Texas Local Government Code, the presiding officer in the quorum of the city, Lamarck City Council will intend to be and will physically be present at 11:09 B. Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public and the meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel 16 and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Kiara, would you give us your call please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember District A, present. Councilmember District D, I believe, is on.
Yes, I'm present via Zoom. Unfortunately, I had a medical procedure this morning that had me under anesthesia, so I'm participating by Zoom.
Thank you. Can you give us your address, please?
1020 Durow Road in Lamarck, Texas, 77568.
Thank you. Councilmember District C, present. Councilmember District D, present. And Mayor.
Present. Thank you, Kiara. Will now move to new business. Items presented to the council for discussion and possible action. Item 31, Current Financial Status Analysis. Mr. Garcia, this is a financial expense visual report for the first one-third, one-third of fiscal year 24. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask Kyle to share the screen with us here so we can get a visual look at it that we have so far. This will also be at a six o'clock version as well for us to take a look at for visual purposes. Similar to our monthly sales tax report, we wanted to have a snapshot that we could share readily available. We know it's not the full financial report that we want to have available monthly. We're still working on compiling that, keep it clean and concise. In the meantime, we wanted to show a snapshot of where we are to date. Our operating general fund and then the next page will show you where we are with our utility fund. So currently here to show the list by department. It is no surprise. We've done a lot of hiring. That is why our HR is a little bit over. Fire and PD are both slightly over because we just had a lot more folks that were in transition there that we're trying to bring on board. And then obviously Streets has been over budget, thankfully, due to a lot of the street work that's been done. Shop is slightly over due to the cleanup efforts that we've had out there. Overall, not too bad. We're not where we'd like to be yet. We'd like, we're supposed to be in threshold, as you mentioned, Mayor, four months through, which is roughly 33.3%. Or roughly at 36% of the budget having been expended. We're slightly over where we'd like to be. We want to make sure that we do not get there, get to pass our 100% threshold overall. We do know that we intend to curtail those down so we can make sure that we do not exceed any of those by the end of fiscal year as we do each year. But overall, as an average, that's where we stand today. Kyle, could you go down to the second page? Second page, much stronger than right now. We do know that our fiscal months of leak repair in thus will be in the coming months here during spring and then the summer. Thus far, that's where the percentage is by. The only one that's slightly over is our sanitation. We're just about 1% or not even a full percent over. All the rest are slightly under budget. We're happy to report that. As you know, the stormwater that's shown is not even an actual budgeted expense to date. We only have certain things in there, not our stormwater staff. That's being consumed by a lot of our street staff. We do not yet have a full, fully funded stormwater account. We're happy to report that overall, the utility fund to date is 28% thus far, one-third throughout the year. So instead of 33.3, we're roughly 28%. So slightly under budget. But we do know, again, no, it's not 12 months at a time where we're just an hour to eight and a quarter or 8.33% expended per month. We know that that changes throughout the entire year. And it does go through waves. For example, we know there'll be a lot more bulk trash coming out here in the spring and the summer while they're curtailed and so forth. We have been increasing our efforts. We have encouraged to clean up the yards and so forth. And that is a clear explanation as to why the sanitation is just that 1% over. We are pushing folks. We are educating folks on what needs to happen through those accounts. And that is a very brief snapshot of where we are today. Again, starting with the next month, when you see at the end of February, you'll see a much more robust report with much more detail. We want to keep this as our visual snapshot of the sales tax report, which is our way of reflecting that thus far. We're going to continue making edits at least to make sure that we are in line with the agreement. Kudos to our finance team that put a report together for the help of Ms. Michaela to make this a clean, simple, one-page representation of the problem. I'd also like to note that this does not include that service. Obviously, that's totally separate. This is just operating. Obviously, that service will be included in the full report.
Very good. Thank you for opening this discussion, Mr. Garcia. Council, this, we have these two slides before us. Do we have any questions for Mr. Garcia as it relates to item 31 and the two?
I asked him where.
It's not there, but it is part of the agenda.
There'd be in the backup documentation that we have online, agenda online. Um, as I was saying, did you get your question answered?
Yeah, it's online.
Thank you. As I was saying, Caesar, thank you for the presentation. Council, do we have any questions as it relates to item 31?
Mayor, I do if I could.
Go ahead, Joe.
Mayor? Yes. So if I, if I'm understanding this visual document, it represents the operating expenses. And then at the very bottom, you've got the overall budget, which is what we've in our 2324 budget indicated our goal of on expenditures. So my question to you is, under the operating utility fund report, in the, in our budget that we approved for 2024, the operating, well, the total expenditure, the overall budget is $9 million. Well, it's not approximately $9 million, yet under this document here, you've got an overall budget of $12 million. I'd like to understand the difference.
Sanitation, Mayor Potemah, sorry, Mayor.
Yeah.
Sanitation is its own separate budget. For visual reasons, we consolidated it here within to show that as one. You know, sanitation is not part of your normal utility fund reporting. It is its own separate fund. We've included it here to consolidate and show a snapshot of where we stand on all of our operating expenses, not including the debt service.
Of course, I appreciate this. We're making efforts. We still don't have profit and loss statements or regular. But once again, I've mentioned this and I've discussed this with you. And I would suggest that it would be helpful that we compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges in terms of financial documents. And so if we have a budget that lays forth categories that we've approved, this is helpful for me. That's the hard head. I would like to see the same things in any, as you call this, a visual aid with regard to the expenditures up to date. That's helpful for me and I think many members to understand what we've approved, what we've spent so much time on. And as opposed to another document here that has perhaps categories that are not consistent with the approved budget. Does that make sense?
Completely. Mayor, I see Mr. Christine and Ms. Gina are here in attendance and are taking notes. We have made note of your request and we'll make sure to do so. Again, this was our intent to keep it short to two pages. And it could easily be done by adding a third page that separates sanitation from the rest of the utility fund. And we're more than happy to represent that and then bring that forward.
Mayor Potemah, this is Christine Turner. I just want to let you know.
Yes, Ms. Turner.
Yes, we are working on that. Because it is a manual process of, you know, building out an Excel spreadsheet. You know, anytime that you have to actually enter numbers manually, it's a higher risk of error. But we are, we are definitely going to work on that report for you. I haven't not heard you. It is coming. Actually, I had to build a report just to get these numbers in the graph, so it's well underway.
Yes, I believe you. Certainly believe you. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Joe. Any other question? Again, I think that what we have here today is progress. Because there's a willingness for us to report and there is a willingness for us to inform council so that we can have enough time to respond. That's a good thing. And so we'll build from there. So I have a few questions about this, this analysis. So as we declare that this is an analysis, I'd like to see information as it relates to the areas particularly that are currently exceeding the three-month budget. So for example, if there was a 37% usage in human resources, then we perhaps would need to break that down and say, maybe in a pie or maybe in line item, however that looks for us as a finance team, what that, what those overages are coming from if.
I do have an idea already. I know as Caesar mentioned, you know, we did hire in human resources, so that was an outlier. But also, there was a cutoff time that I had for the payment of 23 invoices. And sometimes some of the departments, not all, but some, and it happens that some invoices come in late. So I know that was also a factor in that area as well. So some of the 23 expenses had to be paid in '24. So.
Okay.
That is a fact that that did happen. I did have a discussion with HR about that.
So let me ask you this. Were those expenses budgeted in '23? So for example, these were things, let's say it's paper. So there were five reams of paper budgeted in '23, received in '23, perhaps even started to be used, if not used, in '23, invoiced in '23. But not paid until '24.
It could have very well been that situation. I'm going to research that and kind of pull those items that were paid in '24. Because we received the invoices so late.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
One of the things, and it was brought up during the audit, that we failed to do was start the audit on a timely basis. One of the things tied with that longer to close. They've been asked to make sure after the audit, have a clean flow to the 24 years so we can go back for a lot of. I think that's why I'm doing this. Perhaps we close a little bit. Either way, the effort was to not have to wait seven, eight months to start the progress of restarting that here as we stand four, five months into it. That could have also been a factor in some of these that I have. I was still. Stop the 23, start a fresh 24, not.
So there's a possibility that items were budgeted in '23, acquired in '23, invoiced in '23, but not addressed until '24.
Correct.
The key for what I'm trying to understand is they were budgeted. That was weird. So they were budgeted, Ms. Turner, in '23.
That is what I'm hoping.
So these were items.
Once we break it down and see.
I just caught what you were saying. We want, you want to confirm that they were budgeted. Okay.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Yes. Now, we are, like Caesar stated, we are in that soft period of our audit. I'm in communications with the auditors weekly, kind of asking them, are we on target? Is it anything that we've supplied that you need? You know, we're missing anything. So I'm in constant contact with them because I know the goal is to provide a CAFR, a comprehensive annual financial report this time. And I know that Mike Brooks mentioned that that takes a little more time and effort. So I wanted to get us started and my goal was to let departments know, get your invoices in because we're going to start having this hard stop.
Right.
So that we can start audit on time.
Would you do me a favor for all of us, for all of our edification here in this room and certainly online? If that scenario happens, how do you, as a finance director, reconcile what we are discussing? If it actually happened that way, how does that reconcile? Because you have an approved item, discussing? If it actually happened that way, how does that reconcile? Because you have a, an approved item, a, a used item from one year. But then it has to, right, it has to, to be paid in another year. How does that work? What would you have to do?
I would say I would have to provide some type of variance analysis. Or actually accrue it. We would have to approve it.
Accrue. What does that mean?
The invoice meeting. We would have to set, do an accrual entry to date the, the expense that is truly a twenty-three expense back to twenty-three. It will reverse in twenty-four and then the actual payment would hit in twenty-four. So in other words, the twenty-three books will reflect a payment, that expense hitting that year.
Right.
And then it would reverse in twenty-four and then the expense, expense hits in twenty-four. It's actually paid.
Is that common in, in accounting practices? Okay. Okay. So, so perhaps the, the human resources budget needs to be resolved.
Maybe wasn't properly accrued.
Okay, okay. Public safety.
I'll check into that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Could you provide a report for, let me, let me, could you have Ms. Turner provide a report for us?
Certainly, Mayor. We intend to have all of that included as well as a more in-depth financial report as of the next month's tally.
Thank you. So I, I assume what you're saying to us also now in fire because fire and police have also exceeded the three-month mark. I assume that's overtime?
A lot of that is tied to overtime. A lot of that is also tied to onboarding and possible training for any of the new staff that we've been in transition of hiring. So as we provided for shortages or any new additional onboarding we've had to do.
So here's, here's, here's what I'm, I'm saying and I'm, I'm asking that we do in the future. When we have charts like these, we need explanations in those overages, right? So that people can understand and we need to be accurate in those. If, 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 if it's over by forty-two, if it's over to, if it's forty-two percent, which means it's over by nine percent, right? In that overage, we need to be able to say four percent of it was overtime, right? Three percent of it was new bunker year or whatever, whatever that would be, right? So that the people would be able to see where the overages are and so that we would be able to receive feedback on, you know, what we should do to represent them, if that makes sense. And so I, I can continue with, with that, but I, I, let me drill down into what actually happened and start and, and not so much how we should do it next time. So what, what are we saying happened in streets? That's thirty-seven.
The thirty-seven percent there, again, only tested to where the biggest expense was would have been tied to a lot of our pot hole repair. Remember the last meeting, we reported how the potholes we've exceeded and repairing already at this point that we were last year. We've had a lot more concerns and complaints about pothole repair that we do look to be more efficient with. Once we provide all the potential equipment that's being put through the art but recommendations, we can decrease our costs and be more efficient and providing those same services.
So the pothole repair has increased because we have more potholes or because we have more people repairing potholes or because we have somehow become more efficient with the people we have repairing potholes?
Mayor, safely, you could say probably say it's a combination of all three of them. We weren't fully staffed. We are now are, I think, just now recently, we just had one person transition the last week, but we're very close to fully staffed. We are repairing more potholes and thus using more material.
Okay. And the other thing, there are some of these departments, again, same, same concept of, of educating, educating the public. There are some of these departments that are extremely low, but they will, they will rebound very quickly like the city clerk's office because there is an election, right? And so that will, you will catch up as the, the year goes by. Emergency management.
Even with finance with audit expenses.
Audit expenses, finance, emergency management, hurricane huddle and preparations for hurricane season.
Correct.
Would you then help us to understand your code compliance, why that's so low? That's concerning. I assume it's, has to do with the recruitment and the hiring and the retaining of employees. But I'll, I'll let you confirm that. And the last one that I wanted to talk about is why is the city manager's office nineteen percent?
Certainly, Mayor. One, I guess we'll start with code enforcement being low. We do know that right now that one, there was a vacancy earlier in the year until we filled it. And they're still to date right now, two positions short. We just had to post it again once more, I believe, on Friday, if I'm not mistaken. So we are now down, we have a code two position that we're looking to hire here soon and a code one. If we are able to promote from within for that code two, it's one of the considerations that we may do. We may have another code one, but either way, we're down two bodies to date right now with a code and that would resemble why one of the, one of the reasons why at the date there is so much of a shortfall there. As far as the city manager's account, a lot of what our expenses are, are cyclical throughout the year. I traditionally myself, you know, anytime that I've had any budget, I know that the first quarter of the year, I, I do whatever I can as far as my budget that I've ever been at, at any stop to not do too much spending unless it's absolutely necessary. So we are being more efficient there, but we do understand that later in the year, whether we travel, training, expenses, marketing, advertising, whatever maybe that comes out of our budget. We do know that that's more of a bell shaped curve that hits more middle towards two-thirds of the year.
The only other thing I would, I would say about this analysis, again, I want to, I want to share that it's good to see that we are actively engaging council and the community to provide analysis. And three months is, is remarkable. I think quarterly would be definitely something we should continue to do. So, so I appreciate and applaud us for that. And it is a work in progress, right? This is a work in progress. It gets better and better as we do it more and as we get feedback from our community suggesting what they would like to see or understand better. I will say I would like to see revenue projections as well. In particular, permits, fines, fees and forfeitures. We know that we keep track of our sales tax. I believe I saw some figures on sales tax. So I know that we're tracking that. I know we're tracking property tax revenue. But the other revenues, I want to make sure that the council and the community know where we are with those revenues. Because the budget has two sides.
Certainly.
The revenue side and the expenditure side.
The mayor, just for
Yes, sir.
The, the more robust version of this report we're, we're, we're getting is going to be at least ten pages long. And in that, it does include your snapshot of all your revenues where you are today.
So when will that version be available?
It'll be ready, if not by this next meeting, definitely by the first meeting in April. The, the idea is to give you a visual snapshot like this, like what you have in front of you today. And we'll add the revenues component as well monthly. So now next month, for example, you'll see right now thirty-three percent. So whatever the next month would be, I believe that's forty-one point six percent. Forty-one point six seven. That'll be the benchmark as of next month, which would have been end of February. And then the end of March and so forth. So it'll always be one month in every year. But it will be a snapshot of where we are as of the end of that month to make sure that we're progressing properly. And ultimately where we end the year. So when we start the year will be zero percent, but then you'll, every month after that, you'll, you'll have that reported quarterly.
Very good. Where are we? I, I know one of the things we talked about, and I wanted to give you a chance, Ms., Ms. Turner, to address in, in, in a more comprehensive way, some comments that you made the last time we visited about the software that you are currently using. Sounds like you were trying to say that that particular software is not conducive for providing the types of detailed reports that this particular council is requesting. Is that true?
That is true.
Are you suggesting anything else about that software?
I know with this particular software, we find ourselves running two and three reports to be, be able to build what we need. And like I said, it will, it, it becomes a manual entry process which can lend itself to error when you start actually hard keying in numbers. We're trying to reduce that to provide a report that, that you want to see. So we, we're working on that. We're working with what, what we have.
When you say lend it, lend itself to error. Are you suggesting the, the, when you say key in, are you suggesting I am keying in a report, I am keying in data to provide a report to council and the community? And in that process of keying in data, we are prone to error. Or are you suggesting we as a finance team are trying to account for all of the financial resources for the city of Lamarck and we are manually entering things? And that's causing error? Is there a distinction you're trying to make?
I'm not saying it's causing error, but it lends itself to error. The more you key in things. So we run a report, we'll get a, a, a plethora of data. We start manipulating the report to, to lay it out like you, you know, like we would want council to see it. Then it may not be in its entirety. Then we have to run another report. Then actually overlay that report or key some numbers in on another line. So in other words, it's not spitting out a report like some softwares will be able to do.
Right. And that's fine, but I'm trying to drill down on, on, is there a distinction between you suggesting that there can possibly because you're keying, keying in inaccurate reporting to council? Or are you saying that your team has to manually enter in figures? And the, the actual accounting process is prone? Or is just the reporting process?
It's just a reporting process.
Does it, does that make sense?
Yes.
Because we want to be very clear with, with our community.
Reporting process.
So you're not suggesting that there's anything about this software that lends itself to inaccurate accounting?
No.
You are suggesting that you have to manually enter numbers and in that you and your team are prone to make mistakes in reporting.
On the reporting side.
I got you. I got you.
Mayor, may I? A little bit. So a lot of these reports are reports that have not been provided before or have not been asked for in this sequence. And so a lot of times you need to grab from different areas. For example, and Kyle, if I'm wrong in this, when it comes to STW in particular, right now we've exhausted the amount of account numbers that we could have. Like we literally don't have anymore. So when we get all these new different grants or projects or anything else that comes up, we need to have a sub-account that we need to do. And I know that's getting very technical and getting into, to possibly into the weasel, a lot of the stuff. But it makes then the back work of it, of deciphering that out, outwards and separating some of those things a little bit different. This is the same software we've had in place, Kyle, if I'm wrong, but at least for thirty years.
I, I know at least twenty-five.
At least for twenty-five years that we've had the software in place. To the point that the company itself is no longer investing in it and they have given us a timetable that they are literally, we call for customer service and it's like, hey, listen.
They're kicking us off the software?
Well, no. Basically, it is becoming obsolete. We're not the only city that's going through this, that has had this, this, this archaic software with all due respect. And I say that because there was a situation where we had to call somebody for assistance. And it was during the New Year time. And they told us, and I quote, and I don't want to get anybody at their office in trouble, but hey, I can't help you. You have to call me back tomorrow. I've got to go to my next job. I have to go work a fireworks stand. This is to the extent of what we have. And, and, and I say that not to put information out. I'm not trying to be anything against the company. It's a software that's obsolete. Things have changed. Things continue to change. We're vetting not just the one that we presented as a possibility. We're vetting other opportunities. One thing we don't want to do is what happened then, when the software we are using now was not even a very large software company then.
So let, let's, let's ask this for, 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 for clarification. If, if the admit, who, who recommends the software to the administration and then to the council? Is that the finance director?
Absolutely. Well, in this particular case, because this is the software that manages many, many different portions of our city. We've been beta testing different, different types of softwares for quite a while. Matter of fact, and shortly after my arrival, so now going on two years. We've looked at a lot of different options and we still have not formally gone out to bid. We're beta testing what we like and we don't like because we would need to compile an RFP that asks exactly what we're looking for. So in doing so, I mean, I'm going to mention some names that some folks may know, but from the oracles of the world, from the NetSuites of the world, from the one that we're looking at now being Tyler, Ncode, Funview. I mean, there's, there's dozens that we've looked into. We bet them as a team, meaning that's not just finance. That's utility billing. That's course. That's development services.
Because this software has an application across our, our city. Not just, not just finance application, but in other, other operations as well.
Absolutely. This is the same software that's used anytime we record anything, payroll, you name it.
He, here's what I want to ask you for the edification of our community. What I'm suggesting is whatever software there is that we use, does it first originate from the finance department, collaborated with the city manager's office and then presented to the council for approval? Is that how that works?
Yes, and only one.
So we wouldn't normally, the, the city council would normally, James would normally have to bang on a desk or should bang on a desk saying we need new software because that's an administrative function and we wouldn't know of any issues with that software.
No.
No.
Shortly upon my arrival, it was brought to me from a lot of department heads, not just finance that mentioned and said, hey, this is really difficult to work with.
Okay.
At that point, we initiated and said, well, let's start looking into options that we can then in the future bring to council. When we started looking at the options, they were way too cumbersome for us to bring all at one time to council, which is why we looked at the possibility of using ARPA funds to attain any, whatever software we chose. At that time, we put a number that we vested and we thought at the time, which was now a year and a half ago, of approximately two hundred thousand dollars. Since doing further research for it, we've noticed that it could be a lot, lot more of that than than that. We have several quotes that are four or five times higher. At this point, we've looked at certain sections that we can afford and be realistic as to what we can do. What's not also covered that we're still vetting is that every single department has a single component of software that they pay annual fees for. Which those would also be consolidated in the long run. So I don't want to get caught up in the fact that it's just a one-time charge. All of these softwares, anything that anybody uses, any of these softwares do require an annual fee, whether it's a maintenance fee or whatever else, as, as, as most software companies would charge. So we're in the process of vetting them, finding out what we're choosing, what makes the most sense. So we can bring a proper proposal back to council and say, forget the company. We don't even know yet because we haven't properly bid it. But here's the tools and widgets that we need. We need something that could take care of payroll, accounting. Again, I could go down the line, whatever disciplines. And then here you go, here's a package. We need you to approve it. Now we go hunting for an official proposal that would come from one of these companies. What we're doing now is getting estimated, estimates as to what some of these widgets would cost, but not a formal proposal yet. We don't have one yet because we have not put it in our formal RFP.
Okay.
And I've also had meetings with other departments with the software companies. So we're all on a Zoom together. The software company is, you know, showing different aspects of different, you know, core UB just so the department heads can see it and they can give their input as well.
Okay. Okay. And, and lastly, Mayor, on this, we're also looking at different ways of doing it. We know that costs are at a premium and we need to be careful with our costs and our expenses. We're looking, if we can't get a total packet that does everything and we do have to do it separately, will other software options that are currently covered, will they speak to each other? So if we go with one, will that one speak to this one? So it's, it's honestly, it is becoming very, it is like a Venn diagram. If you pick this, how will it work with this and so on and so forth? So we got to be very careful with how we package that together. That's why it's hard to pinpoint. Hey, here's what it's going to cost because one, we haven't formally bid it and two, we're still compiling if this, if that, if that, then this.
Very good. The last question I have, Ms. Turner, is you mentioned profit loss statements. That's definitely of keen interest in our, on, on this council and in our community. How far are we away from profit loss statements? Monthly financial reporting, whatever that looks like for you.
Probably in conjunction with the other reports. So I would say first meeting in April.
Okay.
I'm going to target for that.
Nice. That, that's a good goal. Good.
That's, that's our challenge. And the reason why is because then as we know, by the end of March, if we're able to do that by the first meeting in April, we'll also have a six-month view. Having completed March, that gives us a fifty percent baseline, which is easier to read as well.
Very good. Council, do we have any questions on item thirty-one?
And Mayor, I do want to say one thing. I just want to commend my department.
Absolutely.
Holly, Gina, Deborah, Brittany. Um Holly, Gina, Deborah, Brittany, they are awesome. For a person to come in and start having them write policies and procedures, change things around. They have been superb. Anything that I requested, they've done. So I just want to let them know that I appreciate them.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Uh certainly, the council appreciates that feedback and that report. And the community appreciates hearing that
Yeah.
we have in this community, staff members and public servants that are actually making a difference. So thank you for sharing that with us. Yes, ma'am. Item three, two, proposed ordinance, uh amending the amending the city of Lamarck's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget by increasing various budget accounts. Expenses transferring positions to new departments, allocating American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds uh and increasing decreasing various various fund balances as set forth by attached exhibits. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh this is the second part of the report. Obviously, we wanted to first see where we are throughout the year. And one of the things that we've looked at, the need to do is make some changes as we do each each and every budget year. If you remember in the past, we have done as many as three or four budget amendments per year. Our goal, knock on wood, this year is to only do one, which is the one we're here by proposing. The intent is to bring you first reading tonight, assuming that it passes second reading in the second meeting in March. So it can take a fake effect on April first, once again, being a clean six-month view. What I'd like to do is to go straight into the presentation and separate ARPA from the budget amendment request, if at all possible. In total, you'll see before you in the previous attached document, there are a total of twelve amendments. I am happy to share that of the amendments, a lot of them do not bring a vast change to your bottom line. What is another thing that has triggered this amendment is the fact that we did attain a budget, uh excuse me, a grant for three hundred thousand dollars over three years uh for crime analytics specifically. So if you notice the position changes or anything different, they're mostly to amend certain positions, title changes, account changes. But they reflect for the most part a zero dollar change, with the exception of the obvious addition of the grant that we received, which would be an influx of revenue that would be covered. The expense would be covered by the revenue received back from the grant as a reimbursement. So before you are the twelve amendments, if you'd like to ask any specific questions on those, I I thought it prudent to bring it to you in this setting. Uh first, if you had any more deliberate questions you wanted to ask, so we could uh move forward with this. Um you've been very gracious in supporting what we've brought to you in the past. Uh I'll briefly go through them. Our first one, amendment one, is our receptionist to a human resources clerk. We talked about that during the budget cycle. It is a no-cost change. It is simply a change in title. Our growing staff has growing needs. And we already reflecting that and doing that already in-house. We just wanted the title change to reflect that. So it is a zero-dollar request. Um amendment two, as you know, the shop department no longer reports to Public Works. Uh we have created a efficiency of how we do that. However, as we've talked about in the past, Kyle, uh it does oversee that department as well as others. There's currently a vacancy for a part-time mechanic that has been vacant. We would like to change that. Again, no dollars to change that, including uh um actual um benefits, anything tied to that would be tied to that previous budget. So it is not any dollar increase there. We're looking at that going to an administrative position uh that we could have some help for Kyle administratively for all the tasks that he has. Uh three, as we talked about in the past, we now have a new deputy city manager. As part of our communications plan that we presented to you, we talked about taking that position in the future, if it was possible, and adding the additional bodies necessary to it. And thus, we were looking at separating that. This one does have an additional seventeen thousand dollar request to cover the benefits necessary on top of the salaries. However, uh we do feel comfortable and confident we could eat a lot of the cost of this in increase through advertising and other uh things. Line items throughout the budgets that we could do that we can be efficient on, including city manager's budget, as well as others that we can treat those costs from. Project, uh four and five are items that we brought to you in the past. You 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 approved those in the past, but said we needed more time to review them, hopefully at the six-month mark. We're happy to report that since we are uh below, sorry.
Excuse me, uh let the record flag. I need to step out for about thirty seconds. Miss Yancy will, as the senior, I believe you're a senior, she'll she'll preside. Mayor Protemis, I have to step up for about thirty seconds.
Uh amendments five and six, as you remember, are positions that we brought forward in the budget. Um we could not fund them at the time. We wanted to make sure we got a uh a um public relations, excuse me, a deputy city manager in place, and we looked at doing those from the utility fund next. Amendment six is your request for uh the crime analyst, which was again funded through the grant. Change seven, since now we were reflecting in in unison, the fact that we would have an HR uh second person for there to be to change that status from HR coordinator to HR manager, as has been previously discussed before uh with other staff that was held a similar position. Meter readers, I wanted to recommend the change to utility technicians, and this is a twofold change. We're talking about not only changing the title, because they do much more than just read meters, but also a change in their department they report to. Currently, they report to department uh twenty-one. And we would like for them to report to twenty-two to keep them in line with all of our water and our and our duties of these folks. Amendment nine uh was brought to us through council discussion. You asked us to look into the fact of having an in-house inspector in an effort to possibly streamline some of those uh some of these actual expenses that we have and to also with the growth and development, to see if we could have enough activity to have one person in-house. Ms. Christine and her team have been able to note what we paid last year for services and thus far will be paid this year. Thus, based on that, we wanted to take formal steps in doing that and we wanted to bring an inspector position in-house um as part of amendment nine. Ten would be the ARPA allocations, which I will ask for you to please just skip past that right now. We're gonna do ARPA separate if we can, please, because it is a much bigger separate discussion. Um amendment eleven, we talked about when we made the change of code no longer being in development services, moving to fire, we needed to move that position with it. We have yet to do so, and we would like to formally do so as part of this amendment. Um the same is true with amendment twelve. We have a position out of streets that is technically working, helping out with some of the facilities thing. So we can do some of those uh projects in-house. That would be leaving uh twenty-one and then coming over to the uh twelve side, which, excuse me, the thirteen side. In conclusion, that's what the expenses are. Every one of these amendments gives you a breakdown of job description, amounts and references. I know there may be some discussion. There is a breakdown that shows exactly what's where the debit and credits would be. Starting on page five and six, again, uh credence to um Ms. Christine and her team who put this together. But all your questions will probably be answered with the backup and also over public view, but I would like to open this up for us to maybe have some discussion on it. Again, we've been probably more thorough than has been in the past. Before Ms. Susie uh uh would would come forward with the report and say, hey, here's what I'm recommending and we would just, we didn't go through it. You asked us to be very intentional with what our requests were, uh very open. And in doing so, here's what each one of those uh requested amendments would be at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Uh council, do we have any questions for Mr. Garcia as relates to item three two? Joe? Mr. Compey on? Hey, do you have any questions for item three two?
I I recall the grid administrator and and um time we also discuss the issue that we use uh we use
Uh Mr. Compey on? You're having a, we're having a, we you're breaking up. There's a connection issue. Let's uh let's see if we can um.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. That could be the
Now, now, again, this is breaking up again, Joe.
Grant administrator.
Joe. Yeah, we're we're still.
Let let me do this. Good. Not follow doctor and I'm gonna get somebody dropped over there. Okay.
Okay, 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 Joe.
All right, thank you.
Well, we will allow Joe to redress this issue, obviously, if he's going to attend here personally. Uh council, do we, in the interim, have any questions for Mr. Garcia or Ms. Turner as it relates to item three two? I I have uh sev- uh several uh comments, questions. So one of the issues that we are having um in our city that that I hear uh quite frequently is the idea that when people call our city, no one answers the phone. And so if that is an, if that is an accurate assessment or even a perception, right? It's not necessarily the 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 best idea to change the position title of a city receptionist to a human resources clerk. If the people are believing um and experiencing lack of commu- customer service and adequate response to their inquiry. So who then is answering the phones at City Hall?
It is a shared responsibility. One of the things we're working on is part of the revamp that you've already approved through the uh bond allocations of of the front area there. We're gonna have multiple people, Mayor, to answer that question. Uh we don't have the setup as it states right now, but the idea is that right now phone calls come in or pass through the ninety-two, ninety-two hundred. And from there are dispersed other areas. Uh we do have a person who answers and when they do not answer, it's it is to be forwarded to a backup and then we have a backup to the backup. And then subsequently, a fourth layer of backup. In that, as we redo what would be the front lobby area, you will have this HR clerk would be in the front, which currently, right now, they 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 do not sit up there. You'll have uh utility billing um up there and you would also have courts having space up there. There's even additional possibility of another admin person being able to share the front space. Uh so those phones would be the first. And when none of those answer, the backup to that is gonna be our um executive assistant, who's in my office, Ms. Michaela. And the last backup would then also be Ms. Kira's office, who she now has herself and a deputy uh city clerk available. So the way we're we're shifting our duties, whether this gets approved or not, regardless, right? Because even if it was a person that was sitting there at all times, that person gets up to go to the restroom, that person goes to lunch or whatever the case is, we need to have a better accountability of that. We're working with Kyle's office to get that done, uh to make sure that we have that system in place.
Uh uh great uh great enthusiasm for trying to address the problem. Here is, again, here's the issue. Who's answering the phone at City Hall's right now? Because apparently uh the person who is designated or the position designated as the city receptionist is not adequate. And and that that question needs to be addressed in the present. Who's doing it now and why isn't it being done efficiently now? As we contemplate changing that position altogether, who's answering the phones now?
Certainly, um without getting into an HR situation, we have a person who coincidentally is supposed to be answering the phones as we speak, who is out him. So right now, if you call, it's being forwarded from that person to the next series of backups. So uh right now, it is that person who is the uh who is the city receptionist. But with the understanding that that person does have different layers of backups. So right now, if you were to call, it would go, I'm assuming it's still before five thirty, it would go instead of that person's desk, passed through to the next person in line. So that's one thing that we've challenged again, IT through our phone service, at that we do have the ability to quickly forward phones to make sure that that happens as well as regularly checking our voicemail, because even if that person is on a call and can't tap over to the next person, the next person would get that. And ultimately, none of those people answer it goes back to that original person's voicemail.
See, here's my deal on this. We have to have designated people who are responsible for a task, always, always, always. If 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 the people of Lamarck are suggesting that they want someone to answer their phones when they call, then we have to have a city receptionist. Even i- i- that that's, that 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 I believe should go without saying. And here's what I'm hearing. And what I think we probably need to get better at, what you're saying is if this person, which I get it, I get it, nobody's knocking anybody. We're just trying to get get better focus. If you're saying if Ms. Christine is is the receptionist and she's supposed to answer and she doesn't answer, then it's gonna roll over to James and then James may answer. But then then James may be in the restroom and then it's gonna roll over to Melanie and, you know, Melanie may be making copies. And so everybody perhaps might think everybody else is, and nobody answers the phone. So but if we have a city receptionist who is designated to sit there and answer the phone every day, all day, not do human resources duty, duties, not not try to to do whatever it is the other, that person may be trying to do to the glory of the city of Lamarck, right? But focus on answering the phones all day, every day. And then when they go to break or they go to lunch or they go to the bathroom, then they hand that baton off to Christine, for example, just giving examples. Who knows for the next fifteen minutes, it's my job until the receptionist checks back in, right? So I think we need to have more of a system like that. Because we are at this point growing into being the customer service-oriented entity that we will become. I personally am not inclined to make that position change. I think the people of Lamarck uh prefer to have a city receptionist dedicated to answering those phones. Um secondly, the administrative assistant, I wanna understand this better from Kyle's perspective. Um you have several departments. You have the shop, which um the shop does uh maintenance to vehicles uh and fleet, right? Uh you have IT, which is a department that deals with the technology of our uh of our operation uh facilities, right, maintenance, uh operation of emergency management. What would an administrative position, an administrative assistant do for you? And did you say, Caesar, that this position is coming out of the streets department? Not this one. Okay, okay, very good. What would this one do for you, Kyle?
So this person would help enter, so a lot of equipment gets damaged, wear and tear, whatever. The gradealls, excavators, any any heavy equipment, light equipment, mowers, et cetera, that comes into the shop. The guys that use that equipment fill out a ticket uh and give it to the shop mechanic, who then gets that ticket, repairs the piece of equipment and then sends the equipment back out to be used. They do that in a very, as quickly as possible, which creates a stack of paper of tickets that nobody knows what's going on at the shop. So we need somebody to help coordinate that information into the software so that we can see that a a gradeall, let's say, has had a fuel pump replaced five times in two years. You know, maybe it's it's past its lifetime. Um different things like that would assist along with helping find parts or going to get parts maybe or just coordinating some of the efforts between uh the guys that are actually out, let's say, doing the work. You don't wanna take them away from fixing something to enter paperwork. So that's where that admin would assist.
So um this person or this position would be the, one of the mechanics positions?
Yes, um so previously, the position that the part-time position that this fulfilled was paid at a higher rate and the person did similar duties. They were more of a administrative person in that in that sense, they weren't necessarily, they were a part-time mechanic, but they weren't necessarily having tools in their hands. They served more of an administrative role when they were there. We're simply switching it to reduce the amount of pay to increase the amount of hours so that we can do so. And one specific part that we missed, and there's also that Kyle receives facilities now as well.
Okay.
So it is spread through all those departments as far as what we do, and a lot of that entails uh where there's payment of everybody's cell phones, whether it's every single time. uh, where there's payment of everybody's cell phones, whether it's every single time that we need to go purchase a computer or anything else. A lot of procurement policies that are in place that, that we need another body to help with.
And because we have lease agreements with Enterprise, our, the amount of maintenance that we do has went down. So this is just.
Yeah, so, so vehicle maintenance, as far as our leased vehicles are usually handled by the, by like Cook Ford, things like that, manufacturers, because of warranty work, uh, and because of our maintenance agreement with Enterprise. So our shop handles anything usually outside of that, especially any heavy equipment or small engine stuff, things like that, which if you think weed eaters, chainsaws, blades, and all the, all, all the fine tunings for all the pieces of equipment, that's what they help coordinate, repairing or going to get parts for, to fix that is outside of the warranty work situation.
So the other thing, I'm, I'm good with that one. The other thing, Caesar, Caesar, is, uh, I agree that because we're smaller, uh, as a public works division, and we are moving toward relying on, uh, in, in major projects, grant funding, voter approved, if, if need be, projects. I agree that we need a project coordinator. Two questions, well, well, one comment and one question. I don't agree that we need a grant administrator, because I believe personally, personally, I believe that there are grant administrators out in the world who work, uh, off of commission, which makes them more focused, more tenacious, more hungry, uh, in their pursuit of grants for our city, as opposed to possibly a, uh, a grant writer. Make sure that I'm looking at this properly, uh, which I, yeah, manages grants. Are you saying that you want them to apply for grants as well?
Not necessarily, uh, Mayor. A lot of what we do now, um, in-house is we take that responsibility amongst ourselves for smaller ones, for bigger ones, especially if they're procured versus non-procured, uh, grants. Uh, then we would need to get somebody to come in and be our grant administrator in that sense, different from if we're writing the grant ourselves and then we attain it. Uh, so to answer your question, Mayor, it depends.
So, so, yeah, so, so I still feel the same way. I feel the, oh, that's the other part of this that I was going to say. I believe we can find a person to do both. That was where I was going with this. We don't need a grant administrator, we don't need a grant writer, in my opinion, separate from a project coordinator. I think that we can find a project coordinator slash grant administrator. Uh, I think, I believe, um, in the situation that we're in now, to realize savings, because the next question I have for you is uh, on amendment four and amendment five, you say they'll be utility funded. Where is this funding coming from in the utility department?
So the utility funds right now, we have been, um, very, very efficient with our leaks. Uh, we've been very lucky to have, um, recently, at the end of this past fiscal year, which was reflected in the first quarter, we had Gulf Coast Water Authority commend us with the fact that we use less water than what we were allotted or began with. Uh, so we found the savings there to cover, uh, one or both of these positions. Further, we're also in a position that we feel strongly that, once again, for another year, we won't have to touch utility rates possibly. Uh, we'll continue with the same percentage increase on the sanitation side as, as contractual, but we're really looking to drive that as much as possible year after year, so we can pass that savings along to our residents as well. Along with that is the fact that a lot of these projects, a lot of us have to wear different hats. A lot of these grants that are out there, they'll take a portion of it when it's a grant administrator, they kind of administer them for free in exchange, as you mentioned, for the commission for these larger grants. A lot of them don't want to necessarily have grants that are smaller because their commission is much, much smaller for the amount of work to be done. So a lot of these smaller ones are a little bit more challenging. Also, you've got two different principles there. The project coordinator is more driving the expenses, while the grant coordinator is checks and balances to make sure the expenses are okay, uh, and in line with whatever federal regulations we need to follow.
Yeah, all, all that, Caesar. I, I get that, but, but what it all boils down to is we, if, if I can say this, and I probably should say this. We have, we, we raised water rates with the promise that, uh, at some point, when when our ability to deliver water becomes more efficient, we would then begin to lower those rates. And what you're suggesting is we've, we've raised rates, and we have now become, or what I think you're suggesting, maybe you're not, we've raised those rates, and now we've become more efficient. But instead of looking at either putting more people on the ground to maintain our water deliverable system, we are using those, uh, those revenues to provide for more supervisory administrative positions. I don't know if that's what you're saying. It sounds like that's what you're saying. If you're saying that, again, I do not agree personally with that. I would suggest, I agree, we need a, probably need a project coordinator, because there are so many projects all over the city. There's so many, uh, items of information that need to be, uh, need, need to be accounted for and documented and things of that nature. I believe that. But I think we need to be careful as to if there is, if you're saying this, if there is an opportunity out of the revenues we have, uh, received from folks paying their water bills, right? That we either propose to lower those rates, or we propose to put more people on the ground, uh, more workers on the ground to help maintain our infrastructure. That's what I would do. So I'll let you speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, that is one of the items that we've teared with bringing forward. Uh, as far as that's concerned, as far as bringing more bodies to help with that, even having another in-house leak crew, because we feel that we're getting to the point where we can become more efficient to drive those down. As you all know, at one point, we were teeing with over sixty leaks at one time. We like to keep that number, uh, if we can, under twenty whenever possible. Uh, so we don't have to get outside help to, to assist us with that. But yes, it is a much more efficient use of that whenever we can do that in-house. We do intend on bringing that to you in this next budget cycle to bring more bodies to do exactly what you're saying, uh, to assist with that, as well as, one of the things we've talked about for a while is, uh, like, for example, stormwater right now, we're paying for out of our actual, uh, street side, which is actual our general fund side. We do know that that's one of the intentions. We like to bring that from the, from the utility side as well, because stormwater itself, we should be treating as a utility. And today, we haven't done that. So no problem. I, I think if, 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 if it's the will of, of the council for us to not have that, we, we, it, it's our job to present these things and, sure, we understand. Um, we, we completely, you know, concur with whatever we can move forward with.
Absolutely. I do agree with, uh, the, uh, let's, let the record reflect, Mayor Protemis has, uh, I do agree with, um, the move to HR manager, more responsibility. At some point, Council, we have to realize that that means more responsibility, more responsibility means more uh, compensation, obviously. Uh, I do agree with, with meter readers to utility technicians. Sounds like this department will be supervised by, or these folks will be supervised by the utility technicians?
They will, they are currently supervised by our twenty-one, which is our, our, uh, utility billing. We are, as part of this change, entitled change, we're looking at moving them to apartment twenty-one, which would fall with our water line, would fall under public works.
Okay, okay. Let me think about that. Moving, uh, full-time permit tech to, uh, from where to where? Help us to understand that.
Currently, that position, see what number is that? Currently, that position is listed under, um, development services. We would like to move that to code to help with certain things such as, uh, rental registrations, whatever.
That makes sense, that makes sense. And, uh, the, moving the maintenance worker, is this the, the worker, the street worker?
This is one of the positions that we're use, we, we do use facilities folks to help with street projects. So it, it's still in unison. They also help with parks projects. It's just to build a team. One of the things that we've had is we've had a facility worker by themselves, sometimes getting on a ladder or on a bucket truck or so forth, or lifting heavy items. Uh, and we often have to lend someone from a certain area to another. This would make that a two-person, uh, crew that would go from, from job to job as they are now.
So why, I mean, but we are, we are creating a street maintenance team. So why are we moving a person designated for street maintenance out of street maintenance if we're adding to, which is, is just a question?
Sure. Efficiency, some of the things that they're going to be doing, both of these positions, the facility person and the street person, will be street responsibility. So you're, although it's being signed one side or the other, for example, shop, a lot of those things at the shop, and even cleaning up the shop that we've done, and laying out the shop, are things that facilities is taking on while before it was a street responsibility. Uh, so it's all general fund side, and it's just moving those positions for operational, uh, needs and efficiencies. We do want to put together the crews that we need for streets. We do know that all, all in all, we probably don't have enough, but we also have ways of helping them by offsetting some of these folks from certain projects, such as if it's changing lower hanging light bulbs that are not ours, um, signage.
I, I get all that, Caesar. I, I'm just saying, I don't agree with, and I can't, I won't personally vote for, which, we get what you're trying to do. Let, let's, let's be clear. You, you're trying to to redirect and reallocate staff, and that's a good thing. You're trying to become more efficient. I'm just saying that if we are creating a street department, I won't vote to move a person out of the street department, because the number one issue of our city currently that we hear, or that I hear, is that we need to repair our streets. The last thing I wanted to share with you, this one hundred fifty thousand dollars in additional funding that you say we need, I would, uh, suggest that we look at other, uh, departments. For example, uh, the building official, apparently, uh, if we are able to do that in time, we may receive some savings from that, maybe, maybe not. The code enforcement department, because we have not had a full staff, right? Those are hours that we can't get back. So, uh, those monies may have accumulated. So I would suggest that we look for savings in those type of areas. For example, Ms. Turner may have had a accountant one position. Maybe somebody left in October, and she didn't, uh, fill that position until January. Those are savings, right? So you accumulate those types of savings, uh, and you might get closer to that one hundred fifty thousand dollar.
And, and Mayor, actually, fifty thousand of those hundred and fifty are exactly what you're asking, what, what you've mentioned, savings that way. The other hundred thousand have been from additional grant funds that we will be receiving once we have hired this, this crime analyst to do the work of that grant. So the hundred and fifty that is being established, we've already covered it, all these changes that are being brought to you are being brought to you without an additional expense to the general fund in any which.
So none of this is going to cost, cost, cause us to have to, uh, expend any more resources than we've budgeted. Nothing you've presented in this part of our budget?
No, sir. Nothing. Amendments one through twelve will all be covered through that.
Okay.
The only, and I take that back, except for the hundred thousand that we have accepted the grant for. So there will be an increase in a hundred thousand in the budget, but there's also an increase in a hundred thousand in the revenue, because it's a three hundred thousand dollar grant over the course of three.
So it'll be a wash.
It'll be a wash.
Okay.
All of this will be a net, net zero changes.
Okay, let's do this. Mayor Protem is here with us, uh, and so I got my questions in, Joe. We can certainly yield the floor to you so that you can proceed.
Great, well, thank you. Get through this quickly. I was asking, it's good to experience a Zoom meeting. It's a little challenge, by the way. I was asking about the grant administrator, and, uh, w- we have a grant administrator already, which is grant, grant works, correct?
Mayor, pretend we have more than one grant administrator. We have several. They're tied to different grants.
Okay.
They all serve as consultants currently.
And, and their fee is paid for by some portion of the, of the grant, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So my question is, what's this, this grant administrator going to be doing above and beyond the services that are provided by our grant administrators at present?
Certainly. So although we may have a grant administrator for certain grants, there's other grants that we pursue that do not have a grant administrator. A lot of the grants that we have been after do, may not have a grant administrator, or may not have a mechanism to where they could be paid for from the actual grant. So they, these, these grant positions, these grant projects, a lot of them do not have a grant administrator for us to offset the costs from. Uh, a lot of these smaller grants that we're doing in, in smaller capacities, um, are usually, don't have an actual uh, contracted grant administrator. Right now, we're working with three different grant administrators across our current list of grants. Uh, so we, we, we do work in conjunction with those, but there's other grants that we attain in-house. Ultimately, also, having a grant administrator is an outside person. We are, we, as in the city of Lamarck, are still responsible for that, and primarily, the finance department is responsible for making sure that every single thing that's turned in is absolutely correct, because at the end of the day, although if we have a grant administrator, and we do the best that we can to hold them accountable, we would be the ones, ultimately, if there was a mistake or anything that, that wasn't correct, that we would need to be responsible for. So it would be a person that oversees the actual grant companies that we utilize for the bigger grants, and then for the smaller grants, they work in conjunction with all the department heads. For example, we just brought you, I believe we're bringing you a grant tonight, um, with Lone Star. That one has a grant administrator. But there's also grants that we're doing in-house that don't have a grant administrator, because there's no, we either pay for the expense for them to write the grant, and then we have to administer them on their own, right? Or if we want to pay additional funds, they actually don't come out of that, they come out of our budget, uh, for us to do so. So it depends on which particular grant we go after.
Pay to write the grant. So this person is going to be doing grant writing as well?
No, no, no. I was saying in certain scenarios of certain grants that we go after. Some of these contractors do not do them for free as part of that. Some of them will, will do that as a per service, and then we're left to administer them if we do receive them. A lot of them, we've learned to write in-house. So, uh, I'm looking at one, two, at least two department heads who are in the room, as well as myself, who've all been responsible for submitting grants at, at one time or another.
And, and as a follow-up to, uh, what, what Mayor was asking on that hundred fifty thousand dollar figure, on, on any of, usually on grants, there's some portion of it that is at administrative fee that goes to the grant recipient. It, it ranges anywhere from ten percent to twenty percent.
Certainly.
What, what, if any, are we receiving or setting aside for ourselves on these grants that are receiving?
I am so glad you brought that up, Mayor Protem. On all these federal grants to date, we have zero percent allotted for them. They have been written and established and received as to all of those amounts going to whoever the grant administrator of record has been that has been procured. As we continue to grow as a city, we could easily pay for this twofold if we did some of these services ourselves. So to answer your question, yes, there usually is a ten percent administrative fee. Uh, but to date, with all the bigger grants that we have, we don't have that capability, have not written that into those specific grants. We have begun to do so in some of the smaller grants that we've gone after, to try to offset some of our costs, and will continue to do so. But then again, that burden of administering those smaller grants has come to either my office, myself, and/or Ms. Michaela, or shared upon the department heads who have all taken that responsibility, because we know that we need to do what's best for all of our residents. But it does take away then from our regular day-to-day responsibilities, because we're also wearing a grant writer slash administrator hat.
Okay. On amendment nine, the new position, development services inspector. I recall, this is a question that I had asked in budget two years ago. Kathleen, I discussed it, I think, with you at one time, too. The, the response that I got at that time was that the outside contractor that's being utilized actually is available and basically all the time, right, Kathleen? And, and has kept up, more than kept up with the development work that we have. And.
And there, there's no, um, over a little too, or inspections of vermin's plant reviews.
Yeah.
If anything, we're more efficient now than we've ever been. We can return around inspections within twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
Plant reviews are done within five, ten days. Pretend it's normal complexity of them.
Yeah.
Let's see, developers and the contractors pay the fees, or auto-inspect, auto-inspections, or family, and turn it out of turn. So, uh, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a warm and fuzzy for that one, because I'm not.
Let me just speak to that, because let me speak to that. I know we had talked about that, but as a person that I see what Ms. Ben Stammer is saying, but I also see the necessity. I see what Ms. Ben Stammer is saying, but I also see the necessity of doing both. And according to this. Purely manages all inspection, inspection and current costs of one eight, one hundred eighty-three thousand. But we're using both, so we'll have the in-house and we'll have the contractor.
That is what is intended and that was what was uh suggested when we brought this back up. This, adding this item in here was a directive from council that was uh brought up at a previous council meeting. For us to look into for at the future time to do, at, at the first convenient that was possible. This is the time that we're bringing a budget amendment forward. So this would be the first time possible. If we don't address it now. I can bring it back to you in October if you still want me to. It's your decision. You asked us to do, conduct the exercise. But yes, to answer your question, Councilman Yancy. This would be a position where we would take some of those inspections in-house and then overflow would go.
So you're using both.
That would be the hybrid situation for us to be able to monitor as we do with a lot of things. We, we, we have a pilot program that you do it. And uh, and then we could go from there.
Okay.
Well, I'd just, like I said, I'm, I'm not kind of a warm and fuzzy about that. And then um, the other, the other question is that. The cost associated with that, that a hundred and eighty-three thou, or that's how much we spend on the current one.
Right.
Correct? Last fiscal year, last fiscal year, we spent a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars with that uh vendor. That's how much was spent for we being, for plan review and inspections.
What's, what's the, you haven't had a, I didn't see a salary. I didn't see any.
It is, and it's, it's, it's in the future pages. I believe it's broken down on, uh, starting on pages five and six. It breaks down a per amendment as to what the cost would be specifically, but. Uh, yes, the uh salary that we're looking at for this position is roughly sixty-five thousand dollars per year. That is not inclusive of any fringe benefits, taxes, uh, which would be ta, taxes, insurance, or TMRS, in this case, retirement.
And at sixty-five thousand dollars a year, are we getting the same? The, the same experience in terms of the inspector that we have now?
Well, we haven't hired anyone yet. We would, we would pose this question that we would go out to possibly look to hire somebody that would have these. Again, this was brought as a directive and we're trying to be as efficient as possible. And uh, this is a, a, a first step to get there.
And, and the other question is along with that position, it seems to me that. He, he or she would have to have a truck as well too, or a vehicle, right? And that's not incorporated in this.
That's not incorporated currently, but we are doing some changes with our affiliate management. We'd be able to accommodate that.
I think that's, that's all I have in there.
But again, we're using both. We're using the contractors and our.
This, this current uh, uh, plan that we have would be to use a combination of both. Obviously. We would take on whatever we could take and make sure that we could be efficient and, and quick on our responses. And then whatever overflow would just would go to um this outside vendor.
Are we going to take these individually or?
Yeah, I think we need to. Yeah, I think we need to.
Whatever you, yeah.
I want to ask about the mosquito guy, the mosquito guy. Where, where's that coming in?
What mosquito guy?
And he's not, I'm just saying, are we going to have that person too?
So currently, the mosquito operation is taken care of through our public works department.
Okay. I'm just checking.
Yes, Mayor.
Any, any more questions? Because we have one more item to discuss. Kiara, let's see if uh we can, we can do it this way. Uh, to Mayor Protem's point. Is there a way to take uh maybe some of these individually? Uh, to get some sort of consensus before we vote?
Um, so this item's actually going to come back up again at the six o'clock meeting. Uh, we would prefer that we make this.
Take action then. Okay, so can you help us to?
But yes, you can.
Could we go one by one?
You can make a motion for each amendment if you want to keep it or pass it.
That'll work. All right, guys. If there's no more questions on item three, two, we'll move to item three, three. Uh, American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds, discussion, possible action regarding the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. If you remember, we made a presentation, we talked about allocating these funds. So we brought you a presentation uh to which we, we had no questions at the time. Uh, and we're bringing to now a synopsis of that again, of that presentation. The presentation is enclosed. As well, so if, if you have any questions, but what we have is the allocation spreadsheet as to what we feel is necessary at this time. Now, we can deliberate, we can discuss, we can approve some and then come back and approve others. I will tell you the only timelines that we have are as follows. We must appropriate the entire balance that's available, which scroll down for me, Kyle, just one second. The entire four point two, five, five, six, nine, eight with thirty-seven cents. That must be appropriated. Prior to the end of twenty twenty-four calendar year. I would prefer, so we don't wait until the last minute that we try to do that before the end of the fiscal year or sooner rather than later. That entire amount must be appropriated. We don't have to spend it all, but we have to appropriate it before that time. What we've done is we color-coded, so you see what our intents are as to what fiscal year we'd be making these. Expenses become a reality. They may be before, but they certainly cannot be after. We must expend all four point two million dollars. Prior to the end of calendar year twenty twenty-six. Now, some questions that I could tell you that I have had. Uh, quite a bit of concern with and that I know that we're going to need several swings at is. Today, if you were to allocate, hey, let's just allocate twenty twenty-four. Because we want to decide that we're going to do it a certain way. And instead of, I don't know, let's see, uh, the police station, we'll scroll down a little bit, Kyle. Let's go to one that's a little bit different. It's procured. All right, stop right there. Let's say, for example, the pothole repair trailer. Instead of a hundred and five thousand, it is a hundred and two thousand five hundred, right? Then we would have until the end of this calendar year to reallocate that. Otherwise, we would lose the difference. So what I'm moving to do, what, what is on here is for us to procure as many of these things possible. That are in the procurement side of, of, of the world. By twenty twenty-four and sooner rather than later. We would like to get these done sooner or later. Why? So then if I need to come back and change that appropriation to make sure that we meet the federal guidelines. We have enough time, hopefully, within the next three months after you pass the original one. Now, as a budget amendment, we do need to have two readings. So we do know that we would hope that we can stay online, so we can start spending these funds on April first, if, if, if you allow us to do as we're planning. So then if you want us to bring it back three months later to see a snapshot of where we are and we need to reallocate in some way, shape or form. That we have the ability to do so, but we have until calendar year twenty twenty-four to do this. So if you tell us April first, we can bring this back into live during budget process and see where we are then and see how quickly we can get this done because if you notice. Uh, can you scroll down just a little bit, Kyle? Down there, we have broken down the spending by year. You notice a large part of the spending is set to happen in twenty-five. Why? Because we know it takes some time to procure some of this stuff. If we are somehow able to procure this sooner, then we still have enough time to come back and reallocate that separately. What we're asking for is you allow us to allocate these funds for these general expenses on the left. Meaning these are the items that we're hoping to expend. The numbers themselves, we will have to come back and fill in once we have those approvals to do so. In general, what we wanted to do here is explain what it is that we're trying to do. What the method is, where the numbers are. So for example. If we're able, and this is something that we're working with, uh, with, with Ms. Christine, this is a perfect example that's on there. You notice FY twenty-five, we're looking at forty-eight thousand dollars to spend on that water software that we've been talking about doing. If we can somehow absorb this through our u, our utility fund and not have that, that expense there. We can now reallocate those funds now. And use that possibly for street repair. That would give us initial forty-eight thousand dollars in street repair. To date, right now, today. This is what the allocation request would be. Why? Because if we do do that, it would take us a year to fully procure and then implement. That dollar amount, and I'm not hundred percent sure that we can get that done before September thirtieth, which is the end of fiscal year. They, that company has already told us it takes about six to eight months to get that fully uh, uh, taken care of and implemented. This is our first, uh, our second swing. If you, we already presented this to you at one time. We would like for any changes that you want to do, we could do so live on, on this spreadsheet. And we could make any edits that we need to do, as long as we don't exceed the bottom number. And ideally, we would like to be exact because we don't want to leave any puns on the table.
Very good. Any questions? Thank you, uh, Caesar, for this uh, presentation. Uh, do we have any questions for Caesar as relates to item three, three? Go ahead, Joe.
Oh, oh, we're going to talk about the allocations then, is that what?
Yes, sir. If you want to make any changes to the allocations, I urge you to please.
I, I looked at this and carefully and. The, my first question says, are these items, have they been? Have you confirmed, remember, we're working with Grant Works on this, right?
Yes, sir.
Have you confirmed that these categories are permitted expenditures under ARPA?
Yes, Mayor Protem. We've met extensively with Linda Miller, who is our administrator for this specific grant through Grant Works. Um, and have gone line by line, dollar by dollar, cent by cent, to make sure that every one of these is allowable.
Okay. Um, well, with that, here, here, just my, my personal thoughts with regard to these categories that you have here. I, I looked at these from. The basis of what I see is as priorities. And at the top of the list, when I looked at this in terms of a priority. Is meeting the GLO grant matches. Because we have a lot of grants that we're out there. Seeking, uh, and we're applying for. And by the way, I just got an email today, uh, Mayor and Council. That the Department of Agriculture, their community development block grants. Are going to be opening up as well too. Lamarck was a recipient of those, the last square route. So, uh, uh, but, um. So I, I thought that was something that we should go now, put, set aside, have that there. And so we have any questions?
The. May, may I interrupt you just one split second as you talked about DLO matches?
Right.
If you remember on our bond allocation sheet that we had, that five hundred and sixty thousand dollars that showed for FY twenty-six. That's when those matches are due. So that was that amount that was there. Also, we needed to complete those projects that were left over from there. We needed the water sewer repairs. That million dollars was the additional amount needed. So that one million five hundred and sixty that's shown between those two lines. Is specific to either grant matches or to finish those bond allocated projects that you've already allocated thus far.
Interesting. That's strange. The, 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 the one that I have here, by the way. It doesn't have the third line that you have up there. My, my document here.
One on, you don't have the one on the right or the one on the left?
It's at the very bottom.
It's the very bottom?
Yeah, I don't know why. I didn't see how it didn't pull it over.
Oh, okay. Didn't cut it off. I'm sorry.
Oh, maybe here it is, over here. Okay, I see now. It's another separate page. So, so anyway. Jump back and forth in. The, the grant match was for me a priority. The second item that I saw in here as a priority. For me was the streetlight conversion. Great need in that area for so many of our districts. Uh, and part of the, our initiative on, on crime as well too.
Yes, sir.
On that side. So let's finish that out and. And fund that. Then, then, um. The, the category for sidewalk repairs, that's an ongoing issue that we have. And you had, um, I think what's. Uh, I, I'd go with the hundred thousand that was written, it's here, not the, I think seventy-five that you put or something. But the hundred thousand, because we not only, and Gus knows this because we discussed it. Counsel, we need to review, um, the city's responsibility with regard to sidewalks. That's still something that we haven't visited. And once we visit that, then, then proceed forth with. With repairing some of these sidewalks as well too. So that was one there. Uh, the other area that I was, thought that was a priority was in the administration side. For our finance department. We, we, if you eloquently spoke about the, um. Antiquated. Accounting software that we have. And uh, I, I see that as a need for the city. So that two hundred thousand and the digitizing records, I know Sasa, that was something that surprised you when you first got here. The, the, uh, the boxes and boxes that we had with regard to items. And, um, and utilizing those. And so, let me see, that was the sidewalk. The records. Then I also listed in my little list for this initial round. The water usage client software, anything that we can do to help our residents control. You know, their water usage or reduce it, make them aware of any leaks that they might have in their, in their system. I saw that as a priority. And then the, here's the one that I, that I, um. That I support is this, is the street repair one. But for that, that, Mayor, you said this too earlier, right? That, um, we've been hearing that street repair is one of our number one issues that we keep hearing about and with our residents. Come and approach. I, I. In fact, so much so that the item on here with regard to the. This, the police station construction, that, as Mayor, you've also mentioned and. As some of us have also agreed that if and when we, we visit that, that's a voter issue. That's something that we bring a complete package to our residents and, and, and therefore. Let's not muddy this, this with, with that particular issue. Keep it, keep it clean. And increase the allocation for street repairs. So that we can so that we're doing something based upon what we have right now. And. And, um, I'm not quite understanding, uh, uh, Councilperson Yancy, you mentioned this. The mosquito truck. I thought that we had the mosquito. Uh, what is it? The mosquito machine already that was mounted in a truck? Uh, but so do we need another truck?
It's, it is not on the list.
Oh, it's not on the list. Okay, so that, all right, so.
You've ordered that, right?
It's already here. We're just getting our folks tested so we can start implementing.
And, um, let me just see something real quick too. I need to jump here. That, those are kind of my, my priorities. Because there, there are a couple of things on here that I don't see that other cities have done. Is small business development, micro grants. Uh, that's, that's something that's missing. Uh, we had asked last time, there's a particular interest in some sort of rental assistance. You indicated that that's our. Um, being provided.
We, we, at the last meeting, Seth, we have, we have that, we've already installed.
Partial home repairs as well too, correct?
That was already part of that.
Okay. Uh, so, um, I guess that, that addresses that one. But the, the, but the business, small business. Grants or assistance, it could be micro loans with a small interest rate, whatever, whatever.
So that was, that was a, uh. We've got to be very careful. Part of that, the way we were intending to do it originally was not an allowable expense. That's why it's not listed on here as one of the recommendations. Um, and we would need to decide, we need, we need, it's, it's how it's done. Or you mentioned right now, like a micro loan cannot be allowed.
Okay, well, it's a grant, grant. I'm just saying there's a.
But that's, that's something that we want to do. And, and I'm, I'm okay with, with that. That, that item's not on the list. So we're going to add it to the list. We can, and I can go verify that it isn't a allowable expense and how we intend to do it and what the amount would be. But then we needed to sit here and say, all right, we're going to produce, I don't know. Increase street repair by four hundred thousand. Where's that going to come from? What other things do we need to subtract to get there? This is a living document. But I'm hoping that if we have some amendments you'd like to make today at the six o'clock meeting specific to this. I could have it where it's a live document. We can make changes there. Uh, to make sure that we don't exceed that, that bottom line number and can hopefully, I'm, 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 I'm hopeful. And I know Kiara is going to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but if we pass it tonight on the first reading and it's able to pass on the second reading on the twenty-fifth. Then we can begin enacting this.
Well, as I said, and this is, and Mr. City Manager, Mayor, and Councilmember, this is just my thoughts on. That we should move on immediately. It's, as you said, a living document. And then it gives us time to also discuss or, or evaluate the others, but we can take action.
It is, it is indeed living.
Other items.
It is indeed living, but we need to make sure we allocate. And that's it. I mean, once twenty-four is done, it, it, it's done.
I've been on you about that since last year.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any more questions? Caesar, I do have, uh, one question. Uh, the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the service center. So we talked a little bit with Kyle about the reduction in. Service that we provide in relation to vehicle and vehicle maintenance. So what helped us to understand again, what does the service center do?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Certainly. Well, the main part is equipment storage. We have. Currently, right now, over half a million dollars, if not more of equipment that we don't properly store. Because our current pool barn is, was damaged, looks like maybe from a storm. We're also on this list looking at probably purchasing another million to million and a half worth of equipment. That we would also want to properly store. So a large part is that. Our, our service center has been, we've taken a lot of those expenses in-house. If you look at the picture of what it looks like now, this is, it looks like it's a half-open can. If you will, maybe had some wind damage or something that may have occurred. We originally requested 350 because of some of the things that we've been able to do in-house. We are now have reduced that, but we do, one of the major pieces we need is a pull bar and to put some of this equipment under so we can properly secure it. Uh, but that is an extent of the 275, and quite frankly, the mayor, the 275 is not going to cover everything we need. But we knew that we needed to be equitable in how we separated everything. And make sure that we put enough money a little bit, you know, separated in different places.
Yeah, okay. Councils, do we have any more questions for the city manager as relates to item three, three?
Uh, uh, Mayor, I do have just.
Go ahead.
Because it seems to never go away, the remounting of the ambulances. This started a discussion back when I joined council in 20, 2021. Is, is, is the, I guess I don't see the fire chief here. The.
He.
Oh, is he? A deputy, deputy's here? Okay. Just explain to me. We're doing more ambulances?
Ms. Ms. Christine, please don't throw anything at me as I say this.
Okay.
We, we have the need to remount and, and chief, if I'm wrong, correct me anyway. We have the need to remount three of our ambulances. Ambulances, that's a plural, right? Okay. We have allocated in the past funds to do so, but due to procurement, COVID, whatever the case was. The problem is, is the purchase orders were not properly rolled over two, three fiscal years ago. So essentially, whatever funds were not encumbered or expensed at that time rolled back into general fund. So although some of these expenses have been earmarked, if you will, or a purchase order or anything has been earmarked for those dollars. When they were not expended at the end of the year, our understanding through Ms. Christine's office is that those funds are no longer there. They're rolled into general fund. So essentially, we were left with agreements or contracts or. We've signed off on purchase orders now with the company. To remount three different ambulances, but we haven't had funds for them. So essentially here, where if you notice, we originally was 290, I think, go down a little bit, you just passed it, Kyle. Original expense request was 290. We have found a vendor that can get it done for approximately 178, but that's one out of the three. We still do not have the funds necessary to cover the other two. Um, and, and that is something that we wanted to bring to this and, and add to this, that we were able to add it somewhere. But it is an expense that we need to cover, because right now, your fire being slightly over. One of the reasons is more than, and I don't have all the data in front of me, but I'm sure one of the reasons it's. Over as much as it is is because we probably incurred in regular operating expense. That first remount that's already been paid for, and we're already on the hook for two more.
I guess that speaks to when I was listening on Zoom, the mayor's question with regard to what happens when. When you don't get an invoice, I guess, was the question that.
When it's not properly accounted for.
And then, and then, so what happened with us with the previous finance director was. They didn't spend it, so it just went back to the general fund. We saw that as money available, revenue available, and we allocated it for something else.
Right. It didn't roll. There's a procedure that you can roll open purchase orders.
Right.
But you have to account for that in your budget for that next year. Well, those purchase orders will not roll. So when they don't roll over, it just goes to zero, it goes back to your fund balance. And you have to create a new purchase order. For that next fiscal year.
Well, and that's, I'll, I'll add that item because I think we need to honor that. Thank you.
Any further questions for? City manager staff on item three, three. Hearing none, we will move, move past item four. There is no executive session. Item five, there are no actions to take from. Executive session, so we'll move to adjourn. Council, we have about. Ten to fifteen minutes of a break time between now and our six o'clock unless there is an objection. I will entertain a motion to adjourn this special meeting. Uh, and commence our. Regular meeting at 6:10 to allow the council a 15-minute break. I'll entertain that motion.
Don't move.
A second. All in favor? Aye, we stand adjourned.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled city council meeting. The council would like to thank you for your patience as we had a 4:00 PM workshop and council needed an opportunity to recess to reset. And so now we're here, City of Lamarck, City Council, regular agenda tonight, March 11th, 2024. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a regular meeting on March 11th, 2024, beginning at 6:00 PM in council chambers, 1109 B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. In accordance with Section 551.127B of the Texas Local Government Code, the presiding officer and the quorum of this Lamarck City Council intend to be and will physically be present at 1109 B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public. This meeting will be broadcast at this location on Channel 16 via YouTube. Excuse me, and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. Kira, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember District A. President. Councilmember District B.
Present.
Councilmember District C.
Present.
Councilmember District D.
Present. President. Thank you. Tonight, we have Reverend Ingrid Clark from the First United Methodist Church of Lamarck here to lead us in our invocation. And Miss Reverend Clark will come forward and we would ask Mr. Ross, who is a military veteran, to lead us in our pledge. Let's stand if you're able.
First of all, and most holy God, we come to you as we have been asking for your grace. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to gather as a people of this community. We pray for our leaders that you will provide them with wisdom and knowledge to make all the decisions that they need to make on behalf of the community. For those that are gathered here, we thank you for them, for their part for community, that they come to express their concerns and hopefully define. For those who could not make it, Father God, we pray for coverage of health and strength for them and for our city. Lord, we pray during this year of election that you will guide us to great leaders, that you will protect all of our people and that you will protect our nation as we, we turn our eyes to you, Lord, we turn our hearts and our eyes to you in these most precious and holy and great moments.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Hi, we have a presentation of a proclamation to A&amp;A Machine and Fabrication Shop and to Mr. Hutchins. Alan Hutchins, we were at a gala, Texas City Lamarck Chamber of Commerce Gala. Which Mr. Hutchins was awarded because of the great commitment that he has not only made to our community and business, but more importantly, he's made to our community on a community support level. A lot of members of our community don't know all of the wonderful things that you've done, the contributions that you've made from a civic perspective to better our community. And so you were awarded at this gala. We were there. We were proud as a city to see you receive the award. And tonight, we want to honor you, honor your business, and honor the commitment that you've made to Lamarck for quite some time and allow for our community to know all the wonderful things from your voice that you've been been able to do to help us move our community forward. So, Mr. Hutchins, certainly welcome to our council tonight. Officer of the Mayor for the City of Lamarck Proclamation. Whereas on March 1st, 2024, Lamarck's own Alan Hutchins of A&amp;A Machine and Fabrication received the Texas City Lamarck Chamber of Commerce prestigious Jimmy Haley Community Service Award. And whereas this award is received annually at the Texas City Lamarck Chamber of Commerce Annual Gala by a member of the community who has continually demonstrated an unselfish commitment to the community over several years. And whereas the City of Lamarck truly thanks Mr. Hutchins for his commitment to the great City of Lamarck and its residents, now therefore, we, the mayor and city council, do hereby proclaim March 11th as 2024 as Alan Hutchins' Day. In the City of Lamarck, and urge all citizens and all employees to congratulate Mr. Hutchins on an outstanding achievement with the City of Lamarck and expressing our sincere appreciation to him for his unwavering dedication and service to the community, and testimony whereof, witness my hand and the seal of the City of Lamarck, Texas, this 8th day of March, Keith Bell, Mayor. Let's give Mr. Hutchins a round of applause. Mr. Hutchins, I did not know, and I've been around here a long time. All of the things that you have been able to do to help our community, would you please for us just express or share a few of those things that you've been able to do to help us in your time here as a business owner?
Well, I actually have a note if you will allow me to read it, if that's okay. Okay, thank you. Dear Mayor Bell, City Council Members, City Manager and City Officials, on behalf of the founders of A&amp;A, the current managers and owners, we say thank you. Thank you for this proclamation and the recognition of not just myself, but our company. I'm certainly able to do some of the things that I do because of the company. And, you know, A&amp;A has been a part of the community for 67 years. And the city has been a part of A&amp;A. We can say the city has always supported us and we have supported the city. A&amp;A has always tried to give back to the community, especially through youth programs, whether it be baseball, the schools. Right now, we're really participating heavily in trying to give young people an opportunity to come to work at A&amp;A, but also through the Industrial Trade Center at Texas City, where they can learn trades and skills, welding, machining, I&amp;E, those type of things. And we really, really want to support that. We are still actively involved doing that, but our A&amp;A was founded on that basis, really. Our youth are the future and we need to invest in them. And so that's why I do what I do and that's why A&amp;A does what we do. A&amp;A is proud to call Lamarck home. We plan to stay here, continue to grow, continue to support our youth, and provide a multi-country reach through our products from this city called Lamarck. So, we humbly accept this proclamation and offer our sincere appreciation to this body. All my best, C. Alan Hutchins.
Absolutely. Thanks for that. Thank you. We'll give it to our city clerk. Okay. And definitely, we will definitely have a picture for this. Okay. Congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Very, very much. Thank you.
Mr. Hutchinson, I just want to thank you. You are a part of District A, leading the way. But I also want to thank you, three of my children attended Lamarck High School and your company was very gracious in helping us with the Booster Clubs. I just want to thank you as a parent for everything that you've done. Thank you.
Thanks. You're very welcome.
Absolutely. Citizens, item five, citizens' participation. Limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up to speak may speak to council. It will be limited to three minutes. If you wish to speak, give the mayor or the presiding officer your full legal name, your address, and the item you wish to speak about. Compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed. Personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute or unmute yourself if you are visiting with us via telephone. If you are visiting with us via Zoom platform, you may locate the microphone icon on the lower portion of your screen and you may be heard. If you are visiting with us via in-person, you may approach when your name is called, the podium, the center of the room, and you will be heard. First person is Joseph Lowry. He went to the bathroom. We will then allow him an opportunity to speak when he returns if we are still in this portion. Second person is Mrs. Deborah Stewart. Welcome, Ms. Stewart. Your name, you may approach the podium so that the persons at home can hear you. Name and address for the record.
Oh, sure. It's Deborah Stewart, 619 Hollingsworth Lane, Delany Cove subdivision here in Lamarck.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Okay, thank you.
You may speak.
So, I just have a request and I'm not sure if this is the platform for it, but I would like to request two new stop signs in the Delany Cove subdivision. One at Marble Springs and Havenstone and the other at Hollingsworth and Havenstone. These, this area is, these two stop signs are in one of the oldest areas of the Delany Cove subdivision and they're weather beaten and the sun has taken all the color and wording off. So, if you guys could consider that, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Rick, could you please make sure we have a phone number and we got the streets now, clearly, so we can add that to our list?
Thank you.
Ms. Stewart, I believe our Public Works Director is going to visit with you to get those, those streets so that we can work toward that. Yes, ma'am. There he is in the burnt orange shirt. His name is Rick. Mr. James Osteen, welcome, James. Name and address for the record, please.
James Osteen, 2012.
All the decisions that they need to do on behalf of the community. For for those that are gathered here, we thank you for them, or their part for community. That they come to express their concerns and hopefully define. For those who could not make it, Father God, we pray for coverage of health and strength for them and for our city. Lord, we pray during this year of election that you will guide us to great leaders, that you will protect all of our people. And that we will protect our nation as we, we. Turn our eyes to you, Lord, we turn our hearts and our eyes to you in these most precious and holy and great.
Hi, we have a presentation. Of a proclamation. To A and A. Machine and fabrication shop. And to Mr. Hutchins. Alan Hutchins, we were at a. We were at a gala. What Texas City Lamar Chamber of Commerce. Which Mr. Hutchins was awarded. Because of the great commitment that he has not only made to our community and business, but more importantly. You've made to our community on a community support level. A lot of members of our community don't know all of the wonderful things that you've done. The contributions that you've made from a civic perspective to better our community. And so you were awarded at this gala. We were there. We were proud as a city to see you. Receive the award and tonight we want to honor you. Honor your business and honor the commitment that you've made to Lamar. For quite some time and allow for our community to know all the wonderful things. From your voice that you've been been able to do to help us move our community forward. So, Mr. Hutchins, certainly welcome to our council tonight. Office of the Mayor for the City of Lamar proclamation. Whereas on March first, twenty twenty four, Lamar's own Alan Hutchins of A and A Machine and Fabrication. Received the Texas City Lamar Chamber of Commerce prestigious Jimmy Haley Community Service Award. And whereas this award is received annually at the Texas City Lamar Chamber of Commerce Annual Gala. By a member of the community who has continually demonstrated an unselfish commitment. To the community over several years and whereas. The City of Lamar truly thanks Mr. Hutchins for his commitment to the great city of Lamar and its residents. Now therefore, we the mayor and city council do hereby proclaim March eleventh as twenty twenty four as Alan Hutchins Day. In the city of Lamar and urge all citizens and all employees to congratulate Mr. Hutchins. On an outstanding achievement with the city of Lamar and expressing our sincere appreciation to him for his unwavering dedication. And service to the community and testimony whereof witness my hand and the seal of the City of Lamar, Texas, this eighth day of March. Keith Bell, Mayor. Let's give Mr. Hutchins a round of applause. Mr. Hutchins. I did not know, and I've been around here a long time. All of the things that you have been able to do to help our community, would you please for us? Just express or share a few of those things that you've been able to do to help us. In your time here as a business owner.
Well, I actually had a note if you will allow me to read it, if that's okay. Okay, thank you. Dear Mayor Bell, City Council Members, City Manager and City Officials. On behalf of the founders of A and A, the current. Managers and owners, we say thank you. Thank you for this proclamation. And the recognition of not just myself, but our company. I'm certainly able to do some of the things that I do because of the company. And you know, A and A has been a part of the community for sixty seven years. And the city has been a part of A and A. We can say the city has always supported us and we have supported the city. A and A has always tried to give back to the community, especially through youth programs. Whether it be baseball, the schools. Right now, we're really participating heavily in trying to. Give young people an opportunity to come to work at A and A, but also. Through the Industrial Trade Center at Texas City. Where they can learn trades and skills, welding, machining, I and E, those type of things. And we really, really want to support that. We are still actively involved doing that, but our A and A was founded on that basis, really. Our youth are the future and we need to invest in them. And so that's why I do what I do and that's why A and A does what we do. A and A is proud to call Lamar home. We plan to stay here, continue to grow. Continue to support our youth. And provide a multi-country reach through our products from this city called Lamar. So we humbly accept this proclamation and offer our sincere appreciation to this body. All my best, C. Alan Hutchins.
Mr. Hutchinson, I just want to thank you. You are a part of District A, leading the way. But I also want to thank you. Three of my children attended Lamar High School. And your company was very gracious in helping us with the Booster Club. So I just want to thank you as a parent for everything that you've done.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Citizens, item five, citizens' participation. Limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up to speak may speak to council. It will be limited to three minutes. If you wish to speak, give the mayor or the presiding officer your full legal name, your address, and the item you wish to speak about. Compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed. Personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute or unmute yourself if you're visiting with us via telephone. If you're visiting with us via Zoom platform, you may locate the microphone icon on the lower portion of your screen. And you may be heard. If you are visiting with us via in-person. You may approach when your name is called, the podium, the center of the room, and you will be heard. First person is Joseph Lowry. He went to the bathroom. We will then allow him an opportunity to speak when he returns if we are still in this portion. Second person is Mrs. Deborah Stewart. Welcome, Miss Stewart. Your name, you may approach the podium so that the persons at home can hear you. Name and address for the record.
Oh, sure. It's Deborah Stewart, six nineteen Hollingsworth Lane. Delany Cove subdivision here in Lamar.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome. You may speak.
So I just have a request and I'm not sure if this is the platform for it, but. I would like to request two new stop signs in the Delany Cove subdivision. One at Marble Springs and Havenstone and the other at Hollingsworth and Havenstone. These, this area is, these two stop signs are in one of the oldest areas of the Delany Cove subdivision. And they're weather beaten and the sun has taken all the color and wording off. So if you guys could consider that, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Rick, could you please make sure we have a phone number and we got the street sign clearly so we can add that to our list? Thank you.
Miss Stewart, I believe our Public Works Director is going to visit with you to get those, those streets so that we can work toward that. Yes, ma'am. There he is in the burnt orange shirt. His name is Rick. Mr. James Osteen. Welcome, James. Name and address for the record, please.
James Osteen, twenty twelve, dear Donna, Lamar. What I want to. What I'd like to bring to y'all's attention. Try to keep y'all out of trouble tonight, can. On item number. I might have put down the wrong item number on my sheet you got, but it's going to be item seven dash one. Y'all supposed to have a public hearing tonight on ordinance zero, 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 four, I believe. The best I can tell that, that ordinance wasn't published in the paper notifying us publicly. That you don't have a public hearing tonight. I got a copy from. The twenty seventh. Through today. Of the classified ads where it shows the public notices. And I couldn't see it in there and I read it three times before I come to meeting tonight. I went online and I pulled it up on the Galveston paper. Under, under legal notices and I couldn't find it there. Miss Yancey, I mean. Kiara, did you publish in the paper?
You can't, James, you can't. Yeah, she can't respond.
Oh, she can't. Okay.
Absolutely.
I don't believe it's published in the paper. Y'all, I want to. You know, it's supposed to be published within seven days before the hearing. So if y'all open the meeting and. Public hearing, y'all, I'm in violation of your charter if y'all take action on that tonight.
Thank you, James. If there is a point of affirmation, you may be allowed to speak to the point of affirmation. If you have to add to that statement.
Okay, no, I, I show that it was scheduled to be published on the twenty eighth. But I would need to speak with y'all, send daily news to see. I haven't received an affidavit yet, so.
Very good, very good. Let's, you've been heard, James. No, no, no. She said, she said that she had, it's, it's a point of affirmation. It's been scheduled. She's verifying. If it was published or not right now. Let's move now. Is Mr. Lowry available? Is he, is he in the hallway? Let's, let's give him thirty seconds to see if he's in the hallway or if he is outside. Is he available? Have you? Okay, let's, let's move on to item. Are there any persons, excuse me, online wishing to speak? Very good. Let's move on now to item six. Six, one, special city council minutes of two, twelve, two thousand twenty four. Six, two, regular city council minutes of two, twelve, twenty four. We will take them as a group. I will entertain a motion to approve. Is that second?
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Hearing them, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Let's move to item nine until we get a clarification from Kiara. Eight and seven and eight are obviously connected. Item nine, new business. Nine, one, proposed ordinance, amending the City of Lamar two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four budget. By increasing various budget accounts, expenditures, decreasing others, transferring positions to new departments. Allocating American Rescue Plan Act funds and increasing, decreasing various fund balances as set forth. In the attached exhibits. We, excuse me, workshopped this item earlier. Caesar is there. Some sort of. Brief presentation you'd like to.
No, Mary, the presentation was available for public view. It's also one that we brought to you in the past with our suggested updates. We didn't want to go back to triple check the request that was made to make sure they were all allowable expenses and also to. See how we are on our current budget. We've provided a snapshot earlier. So at this time, what we would like is any changes that you'd like to make to any amendments that you would like for us to withdraw. Again, they're all zero. Cost amendments with the exception of the crime analyst being that one. The other was the fifty thousand dollars that we were able to be able to save through some of the vacancies that we've had throughout the year. That being said, please, any action you'd like to take on these amendments if we could do so now.
Let's, council, let's take these items one at a time. There are twelve of them. We will need to have very quick firsts and seconds so that we can get through this. Amendment one. Position title change from city receptionist to human resources clerk. I will entertain a motion to approve or not to approve.
Move to approve.
Is that second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Let's, I would like to discuss what you brought up in the workshop. I think is it, the, the, the real issue says are. Is that perhaps we look at our phone system. I know that's been an issue before. With our phone system and the way that it works, I think is pretty archaic. And it may not be a question of. Who's answering it? Because basically what, what you're doing is modernizing. City receptionist to a human resource clerk, what the mayor has brought up is saying. The complaints are still the same about how people don't answer the phone and sometimes people want to have a person. So to me, that's not so much this title, it's so much as we need to make sure a person answers the phone. And looking at our, our phone system, how it works and. Just making sure that somebody's there covering, because I know that has happened to me numerous times. And if I didn't have yours, you know, your work cell phone numbers, it would be hard to get through. So I guess that, that, that question is if, you know, making that change. It's fine, but will we still have the same issues? And I think that's what you were referring to, man, when we're talking about having a person to answer the phone.
Just a quick question. I'll tag along. Counsel, person Yancey's question there or comment. I remember one of. My past lives, my business. That was one of the first issues that my franchisees complained that they would call, they'd made this big investment. No one was answering the phone. It would always go to the voicemail. And I had to respect the significant financial interest. So I had a limited staff as well, too. But we made it a point that. After the phone rang X amount of times. To whoever, I was very, very socialist in this regard. It would roll over to the next. Person. And if they couldn't pick up, I would pick up. You know, they would roll over to who was available. But the important thing was, and that is important, just to hear a live voice. Sometimes we're, we're so stressed with what it may be, an overdue bill or a water connection. It's just great to have that person bring down. That's all. And I, and I agree that answering. Getting a live voice is important.
Any, any further discussion? Again, I, I will have to vote against this. Amendment. Because the people have already indicated they are frustrated with. The inconsistency in customer service and answering the phone. And I can't in good conscience. Recategorize. A position. Knowing that. One of the biggest complaints we receive is there are times, more times than not, in many people's experience. The phones aren't being answered. I think that person should. Have the sole responsibility of answering our phones. I'll leave it at that. If there's no further discussion, council, we will vote on amendment one. All those in favor?
I.
I.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Sorry, what was your vote?
The amendment one fails. Amendment two, a new position administrative assistant. This is the position. That I believe will help Kyle to keep track of and organize the clerical. And administrative responsibilities of several departments. The shop slash fleet, IT, facilities, maintenance. The operation of emergency management. This position is coming from a mechanic's helper is what it, what it is currently, right? And because we have. Fleet that has been, that release, a lot of those maintenance issues fall to someone else.
Correct.
Okay. Council, do we have any questions for Kyle as it relates to amendment number two?
Just the, explain to me what's, what's the difference between this amendment two and the last amendment? Are there two people going to IT?
Yes.
There's two people. The, under the, moving the maintenance worker.
Correct. The street from the street department that we discussed about facility maintenance. Because facility actually falls under Department thirteen, which is categorized as IT right now. It would be coming over to that department. For administrative reasons and then along with the part-time mechanic position to be properly categorized. And used, it would call, it would be moved over to thirteen, which is IT.
One more question. And this is full-time or part-time?
They're both full-time.
They're both full-time.
But this particular amendment two is just dealing with the one from the.
Part-time at one rate, full-time at a lower. Lower rate.
Because the responsibilities are different.
Yeah.
Right. The mechanic was a highly, a higher skilled position, which required a greater salary. The administrative assistant is in relation. Not effort, a lower skilled position, which requires a lower pay grade. Okay. All right. Any further questions on item, on amendment two? Hearing now, we will entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Motion to approve.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Amendment three. Public relations specialist and public relations clerk will replace Mr. Pritchett. Because he has accepted the position of deputy city manager. The breakdown of. An additional seventeen thousand dollars will be needed to fund these two positions. Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Garcia as it relates to amendment three?
We're still receiving the supplement from the EDC for this position.
Yes.
Okay.
Any further questions? Hearing then, we will entertain a motion to approve or deny. I move to approve. Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Amendment four. New position, project coordinator. The, this will be utility funded. Council, we've discussed this earlier. Are there any questions for Caesar as relates to amendment four? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Move to approve.
Is that second?
Second.
Any discussion? Caesar, I want to, before I vote on amendment four, I want to be clear. That this. Position will not be created and funded out of any. Excess. Revenue generation because of increased water rates, because that is not something that I'm interested in.
Correct. It is not. It's a direct benefit of our savings. So not of any revenue or anything else. But our savings, increased efficiency, and how we were able to address certain things. But to answer your question, no, it is not. Directly in any which way tied to our rates.
Well, I would. If, if I'm basing. My next thought on what you said, I would beg to differ. Because. If there are savings. And the revenue is generated by our, our residents paying for their services. Even if there is a savings because of the efficiency of the program. That savings is realized because we, the citizens, the residents have generated. Resources based on our ability to pay for water services. So even though a savings has now, right, been realized, then that's great. It's only been realized because the people of Lamar have generated X amount of revenue. You've become, we've become more efficient, but we're still through our water bill payment, generating X amount of revenue. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. Okay. And, and that's okay. That's okay. It's, it's an idea and it's a proposal and I respect it and perhaps the council may choose to. To move on it. I'm just simply trying to understand for myself. Are there any other questions on item? Amendment four. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve or to deny. I'm sorry. What did I do?
For amendment four, there's a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was a motion. Help me to understand. What was it to approve?
To approve.
Thank you. Well, are there any further discuss, is there any further discussion? Excuse me. Hearing then, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? No. Item five, amendment five. New position, grant administrator. Again, this is funded out of, out of the utility fund. Council, do we have any further questions for Mr. Garcia as it relates to amendment five? Hearing then, I will entertain a motion to approve or to deny.
I'll move to approve.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
This, this one's, this is a hard one for me. I think our. The new position for the. Project Coordinator. They're going to be very much, very busy, but we have Grant Works and we have other agencies that are helping us with our grants. Find a need for this yet. This may be something another six months down the road that. We will need more help with, but right now, that's. It's redundant.
Yeah.
As a person that has done grants before, I do know the, the work that it takes, the time it takes. And just how much time it takes away from the actual job duties that our staff is supposed to be doing. As a person that, that has won grants. And has that background to do it right. And there are a lot of grants. That people never apply for and sometimes you may just have three people or three persons. It takes a lot of work to do that. And so. That's why, that, this is one of the things that I've asked in the past. About when you don't have enough money, then you have to go seek that money. And sometimes you can seek that money by grants. Joe and I are very active with, with H GAC. And some of our biggest grants have come through H GAC. But there are also smaller grants, ten thousand, twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand, things of that nature. And what, as a former board member for the Keep Lamar Beautiful, there were a lot of grants. Joe, if you remember, we could not apply for it because we didn't have. The inside help with the city to do it. And a lot of times it's on your own. And because it's not a position within the city, you don't get the help, the technical help that you need. And I do think that we are the second fastest growing city here in Lamar. And there are a lot of things that we need to, to get and we do need, and, and if I'm correct, you said. That this is going to be a part. This is not about more money and more, it's basically just a, explain that again to us, what you told us in the workshop.
So this position is one that it would, would come out of utility fund. It would not be an additional.
Okay.
Expect. There would be no, this is, this is a, we would absorb the cost through our actual current budget. We would not be asking for any change in our budget.
So right now, we have Grant Works that go after the larger grants, right? They don't go after the, the pretty small one.
So to answer your question, it depends. The contract with the city and Grant Works does allow them to go after certain grants. Other grants, we need to procure. We need to procure a, a, a grant administrator. Currently, right now, to date, we're working with three different grant administrators throughout the city. So we work with those three different grant. So we work with those three different grant administrators on separate grants that they may have been assigned or were awarded because of what they would have accomplished. So those are the ones that we deal with some of those. But there's other inside grants that we'll bring forward that may or may not be tied to a grant administrator. They may be grant administrator by fee. Meaning they charge us a fee to go after said, you know, I take that back. We're working with four different administrators right, right now. I apologize. I forgot one. Uh, there, there are four different administrators we're working with, not three. I apologize.
Right.
Um, but yes, to answer your question, some of them are by fee. Hey, listen, you want to, you, I found this grant. I think you qualify for it. But it's not one of those where we're going to get reimbursed. If you want us to help you apply for it, it's X amount of dollars. Give us the information, compile it, we'll put it together for you, we'll submit it, and it's X amount of dollars to do so.
Right.
While others, some of the bigger ones are more of those that, yes, they will apply, or we have to procure them. They'll apply on behalf, and then their expenses are coming from with it. Just a observation. This position for me, as you described it earlier, and as I was sitting here, this is, you know, one of the biggest challenges for grants, and, and, and health person, Nancy was kind of hit upon this, is not necessarily the administration, but it's compliance. That's where we get grants taken away from us. And I know this for a fact, Mary, you, you know, some of them, we've been tagged sometimes and for grants taken away from us because of the compliance side, the city man, no one really knew who was. So I, I, I'm supportive of this in that context, that as long as it's, let's describe it as administrator compliance. Because ultimately I want to ask, not just you, but that person, what are we doing? What's the status of this grant?
Certainly.
Why are we not meeting these, these requirements?
Apparently. Now, this is a task right now that we do by committee as far as all the department heads involved in the project, but we do appreciate that. Um, and, and, and you're right, compliance is one of the, uh, main job duties of said position that we all have to take part in. Thank you.
Again, I'm, I'm sorry, Miss Jans.
No, and I was just saying, there are many grants that we haven't even applied for, which H GAC, because we just don't have the, the, the manpower to do.
We are as aggressive as, as our, as our current resources allow us to be. I mean, I, I, I think staff is all, we've all kind of done grants by committee, if you will. We all, we all are aggressive as we can. I think you've got one or two applications here before you tonight. So, uh, our goal is to submit one or two per council meeting for your review, um, as we look forward, just to, just continue being aggressive, as aggressive as we can.
Uh, again, Caesar, I appreciate you, uh, trying to, uh, add services and add accountability from your perspective. But again, this is a, a position that is being funded out of our utility department. Uh, and that means that it is being funded on the backs of those that pay for water service. Uh, we increased rates on them a couple of years back. And, uh, it's been a tough time economically for our country, especially for our, those of us, our members, not myself, but those of our members that are senior citizens and live on fixed income. And so I do, I do appreciate what you're trying to do. I simply have to vote against it to protect uh, those members' pocketbooks, but I do understand what you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any further, uh, uh, comments? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? No. So the amendment passes three to two. Care if, if you couldn't hear Mr. Ross. Myself and, and Mr. Ross voted in a negative. Yes. Uh, amendment six, new position, three hundred thousand dollars, uh, funded, uh, via a, the B G A, uh, grant. This is for the crime analyst uh, for the police department. Counsel, I will, and will entertain a motion to approve or disapprove.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll.
Apologies. Was that a motion to approve?
Yes. Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item seven, uh, amendment seven, position title change from human resources coordinator to human resources manager. I will entertain a motion to approve or disapprove.
Move to approve.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Amendment eight, position title change and change of department from a meter reader to a utility technician. And, uh, from the, uh, from a utility accounting department twenty-one to utility lines department twenty-two. Caesar, I would just wanted to make sure that I am understanding this. The reason to move them from utility accounting to, uh, you, to the utility lines department is because.
Based of operational needs, uh, better management, more streamlined use of through hand-on water, uh, working with water. Different from our utility billing, whose, uh, whose sole role, whose main role is more accounting and billing versus, and accounts receivable, accounts payable versus the institution of the meters going out.
So our meter readers, as we can affectionately call them.
Yes, sir.
Um, they actually install, repair, meter lines is what you're saying, meter, meters actually is what you're saying. Okay. Very good. Thank you for that clarification. I will entertain a motion to approve or disapprove, uh, amendment eight.
Motion to approve.
Is that second? Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Amendment nine, new position developmental services inspector. Uh, the idea is to secure, to, um, recruit, to hire, to retain our own, uh, city of Lamarque inspector, one of them. And this will save us, according to your, um, presentation, roughly ninety thousand dollars per year.
Man, that'll be dependent on what overflow there is. So the first amount of tasks would go to them. Any overflow would go to BB and G. That's why I wanted to do one at this time, to then be able to give you a more factual number for the next budget cycle, whatever decisions you choose to make.
Okay.
And do we feel like one person's going to be able to keep up with what this company's doing? I mean, is it going to be money smart to do that?
Great question. The idea is to not eliminate the other company, but to give our in-house inspector, if, if, if that's the will of the council, to have them do that first, and any overflow would then go to BB and G, so we can gauge to find out where we are with, with, uh, with actual development at this time.
But the fact remains, we're using, we're still using them.
We would still have the ability absolutely to do so.
Cause it, my question is efficiency, right? And being able to send out three and four and five inspectors, inspectors for the week, if need be, to make sure that, you know, we can keep up with the demand.
Certainly.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think one person, I think we're gonna really have to utilize that company regardless on the amount of inspections we're, we're, we're doing.
Can we hear from, uh, developmental services on how they feel about it?
Absolutely. Uh, Ms. Van Steveren, would you approach, please?
Yes, sir.
She's who? She's who? BBG? Welcome, Miss, did you say Miss Tracy? Welcome, Miss Tracy. Uh, um, uh, Ms. Van Steveren, the microphone. Yes, ma'am.
I have some, um, information for you that was drawn up about inspections. Currently, we don't have an overload of inspections. Currently, we don't have an overload of inspections. But the one thing you're forgetting is that BBG also handles not just inspections, they handle the plan reviews also. And the re-inspections.
What reviews?
Plan reviews.
Plan review.
So I have heard some, um, stats for you. If you'd like to see them for, of the actual numbers that we do, we did in twenty twenty-three, and we did in twenty twenty-four to date.
You said you, excuse me, uh, Ms. Van Steveren, you said they handle inspections, plan reviews. Was there another thing you said?
Inspections.
Re-inspections.
Re-submitals for plan reviews. So, um,
Let's start with some of the pre-development.
Yes, we do have one, we have Scott Williams, who does come to our pre-development meetings for our bigger developments that are coming. Texas I S D, the arena, different ones like that. Um, the smaller ones, they don't usually attend, but the larger ones, we need that inspector, plan reviewer there to help guide these developers in these bigger projects. That's our job. So, um, I'm not sure why where you're looking for an in-house inspector when the amount of inspections, if I can show you, this, this one person cannot do. If you want in-house, you need to hire four or five. And then you're gonna have to think about plan reviews. That's, that's my personal opinion, just because I'm in it every day.
So, so, do I understand that you, the
B.
B B C?
B B G.
B B G. So you're, you're, okay. That's better. Do, do I understand that you're actually providing more than one person to the cities? That's kind of what I'm hearing, right?
So for the city of Lamarque, you have access to one of our senior building officials, Scott Williams, who deals with a lot of your pre-development, larger projects. You have a full-time assigned inspector. We have a secondary floater for heavy days when it's beyond, which is about twenty-five percent of time throughout the year. Uh, you have a full-time plans examiner assigned to the city of Lamarque with a floater also there, depending on the workflow as it comes through. So that inspector picks up a piece, but there's still another huge piece. The plan review and inspector tie-in is very critical also. On the front end, when they're involved in that plan review, it makes it a lot easier for them when they go to the field on the inspection side too. So, uh, Scott bridges that gap for us and make sure that those inspectors are aware of what's going on from those development meetings, so that the information gets out.
Did, is there a contract for services that was entered into with your companies, including the city of Lamarque and E D G? There was?
Yes.
So what's the term of the contract?
It is the contract term, I don't know when it expires. That I can't, I didn't look it up.
It doesn't.
It's a, it's an auto renewal, uh, but it is billed as services or performed. So if we perform no service, there is no cost for that. So it's not a flat monthly amount. It's billed for plan review services, for inspection services, uh, the building official services.
Okay. Well, uh, and Mr. City Attorney, I, I, I just, I like what we have right now. I'm just gonna say that. Um, but I do think that we need to, to visit, revisit that, um, an ongoing co- a, a contract that has no end is not a contract. Um, and does it have to be, does it have to be rebid? Uh, do we have to put out an R F P? Uh, that, those are the questions that come to my mind, uh, on that side, but.
Yeah, but it probably have to be rebid. I would, that's what I would think.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Things like that.
And I would have liked to seen it here, by the way.
The thing, what happened is when you had your two in-house inspectors and they couldn't keep up with the volume.
Mm-hmm. I kind of remember that.
The plan reviews, and they were costing a lot of money. Well, we had to call because we had to get inspectors in. We had to get plan reviewers in. So we called, um, BBG and they came out and gave us the, the overall, what they could do and everything, and they're turning around inspections in twenty-four hours. There's not a city around here that does that. We're turning around plan reviews faster than any city around here. And, um, but so far it's not been an overload. We've not seen any shortage or any slowdown in, in, in work. And the only complaints we have is the inspectors get there early in the morning, but, you know, inspections start early, but, um, I, that's why I'm not sure what, what needs are needed with an in-house inspector for what we're doing.
We need to be, we need to look at every avenue to become more efficient, so that we could save money, so that we can unburden the taxpayer, like any business. Every, every, every business has to evaluate systems and evaluate staff and evaluate the efficiency of their work product. And so I, I would say, and I'm not Caesar, but he's a manager. I would say that his offering tonight would be one to make our, uh, our, uh, inspections more efficient. And so that means that we perhaps will have to look at the cost savings of having an in-house inspector. I think that's why we're here. To Joe's point, we have a contract apparently, and this is nothing against BBG. This is, this is simply saying, I'm sure Caesar's trying to make sure we are as efficient as a city as we can be. But to Joe's point, there is a, a contract that is automatically, uh, extended. That's, that's not, that's not necessarily the best business practice. So we will continue as a council to look at every area of our operation, right? To find efficiency. And so I would hope, Caesar, that all of us, that you and your staff are on the same page. We're looking for efficiency, correct? So could you speak to that, please?
Certainly. Um, as was requested previously, um, we wanted to look at the fact of whether what services we were going to keep in-house versus non. We've, uh, been looking at a lot of them. I know in the past, we've teetered, a perfect example, we teetered with having in-house legal services versus outside counsel. In-house engineering versus outside engineering. In this case, BB and G, or in this case, these services are no different. Uh, we were asked to look in, in, into this. This is the cost of what it would cost for an inspector. And, uh, this is some of the items that we, you know, wanted to present and, and, and bring forward as a potential cost savings, or more importantly, increase efficiency in that sense. We do show that last year, we spent roughly a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars with BB and G. Uh, versus so far this fiscal year, we're spending roughly, at, at the time that this would have been pulled, forty-three thousand dollars. So in the course of the last fifteen to sixteen months, roughly two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars have been spent with this, with, with, with the vendors. And again, nothing against BB and D, that's not to say that they're not worthy of it, or how many people they're sending, or whatever the case is. We were asked to do the study, and, and this is the study that we've done. We've asked to do it as a trial, if we needed to, as a pilot program for the first year, or for the six months, if that's what we chose to do. And that's what we're looking at. That's, that's what we brought forward to council for review. As is with all of these amendments, we're, we're, we're bringing them forward for increased efficiency or, uh, based on operational need. And, uh, we're here to answer any additional questions.
Very good.
The one thing is thanks to city council asking to do an update in the schedule of fees. The fees now, years ago, they didn't, but now the developers and the contractors pay the fees for all inspections and plan reviews. That is, does not come out of Adveral or, um, doesn't come out of anywhere, the general fund anywhere. The permit fees we take in, and the plan reviews fees we take in, turn around and pay the fees for BBG. Thanks to y'all for letting us increase those. I can see the efficiency part of it. I certainly can. And with y'all council's help and city manager's help over the last few years, when I took over, when everyone walked off, we streamlined it. We cut it, we streamlined it, and we made it as efficient as we could do and turn it around. And BBG helped with that, Attico's helped with that. And it's, I mean, of course, we're gonna do what council wishes, but, um, the numbers that you've given, that's includes plan reviews though.
Certainly.
So it's not just the inspection cost that was planned with you is also.
Certainly.
So we have down here for one inspector. How many inspectors do you think we would have to need to compensate for BBG?
I'd say it's four to five.
Four to five.
Yes.
Where are we getting, wh- wh- where are we getting this data from? We just, we're just having a conversation about, about how many inspectors, which that's, that's Ross, that's, that's Mr. Ross's, uh, prerogative and his responsibility as a council member. But you are making an assertion, Ms. Van Steveren, that we would need four or five, which is great. That's a great assertion. But we need that backed up by data. Right?
So how many inspectors have you allowed this city to use over the last year at a cost of a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars?
The inspection revenue was a hundred and eleven or a hundred and seventeen. The other portion of that is plan review.
Okay.
You basically have one and a half to one and three-quarter inspectors dedicated to your city. The inspection volume varies from two hundred inspections in one month to just under six hundred in another month. So what happens is it's doing this, which is what construction does.
Right.
It's what the economy does, right? So the third party supplements by putting that extra three-quarter in. When you tack plan review in, you're another one and three-quarter. You tack a building official in, because all of those services are included in the fee structures of the one eighty-three, that's where that four to five is coming from. That doesn't take into account our permit tax and the other things that go with that too. So a building department in-house is a big undertaking, and every city gets to a point where they go that route. No doubt. This is a reoccurring question. It has to do with population and it has to do with growth. I'm, I'm strictly here just to answer the questions of what staffing we have been providing and what that looks like. Uh, again. We're here to support the city, whether it's supplemental or as we do today. We're fine.
I think, I think my biggest concern is that wanting to have someone on staff. But also working with you as well. Um, I don't, I don't think we need to get rid of your contract. I think we just need to add to it from our side as well. Just so that it can work better as we continue to grow. Like, you know, you're saying four or five, but at the same time, we've got to start somewhere because. I've been in on some of those planning meetings. They're, they're very good. That's why my question has been. Can we still use you all too? When those developers come in and it gets real, like she said. They, you offer different services, not just one. You have different services, but we've got to find a way. To make it work a little bit faster in the, in that. In that office. And so, um, and that's why I'm supportive of having someone from our staff. Uh, represent the citizens. Um, because we can't contract everything out, but we know we are a growing city. And I think it, it just behooves us to be intelligent enough to make sure that we have someone on our side as well.
Absolutely.
Because I do think you work very well. I do, I, I do think we do, but I, I just think we need to, to, uh, to add to it.
So, so the problem for me is that, that we can't. I can't, and I don't want to put this on the rest of the council. I can't. Figure out. Where the, the, the bottom line truth is in all, all of this. Not that anyone's lying, that's not what I'm suggesting. What I'm trying to suggest is. I can't get a real answer on what one ins- one inspector. What sort of workload, work product, amount of inspection, the amount of reviews? That person would normally be able to accomplish. Um, obviously BBG, who is a for-profit business of the highest integrity, I'm not suggesting that they don't have the highest integrity. Obviously, their model suggests that they believe that it is more efficient. For, for municipalities to use a third party. That, that's great. But what I need to understand is if that's true. You're saying, Ms. Vance, that we would possibly need four or five or, or so other persons. Well, what, what is that based on? How, what, what's the average number of in- inspections that a person can do? What's the average salary of an inspector, uh, in our region? Uh, you know, all sorts of questions arise from, from this particular issue. And so if that's true, then I have to, as an elected official, I have to then. Try to, if I can't get that answered, then I have to defer to my manager. Who should have, and I'm not saying he hadn't, but who should have. Uh, had done his due diligence on all of these things before. He has made his recommendation. So that's where we are. You're saying we would need more. Uh. Our manager is saying, uh, we could start with one, uh, and move toward more. And so there's no. There's nothing that you're saying, Kathleen, that, that I can see. Supported by information right now. Do you have information that would suggest? That we need four or five? In here. How do you, how do you just? How do you, but here again?
This is numbers of inspections per month.
I get that. How many inspections does, would a? Reasonable inspector accomplish? Not based on what you think, because I believe, Kathleen, that you could probably do five times. The normal inspector. So throw your, your reasoning out the window. I think we should probably.
Previous inspector you had in-house, I think they were contracted that they had to do ten per day. Ten per day would be two new homes. Because one new residential home minimally has five rough inspections at one time. And then you've got to go to the final inspections. You've got five more inspections at one visit. So that's actually ten inspections. So your previous did ten or fifteen, I think they were contracted for. Anything above that, you had to pay them for. On top of the base retainer you had to give up. So. It with BBG, we send them sometimes forty inspections. I mean, it's, it's unbelievable the number that it can get done and turn them around within twenty-four hours. So. I'm on average, I would say if you had an in-house inspector that was there and you got out there and went after it. Ten, fifteen, maybe do a day, maybe.
You, you. Here's the problem.
Depends on what all you're asking for, as in doing inspections and plan reviews. That he, one is going to be sacrificed.
So, so, I, I do, I do. And, and again, you, you do the work of. Five. Persons, I get it. We need. Fact-based. Information. To make a better decision or. In this case. To, in my opinion, and I'm one vote. On this one, I need fact-based information to overrule my manager. Uh, he is recommending that we try this. Uh, and, and unless there is factual evidence. That will suggest that this is a terrible idea, because he's suggesting to this council that there will be savings. And we, at this point. Uh, unless we see differently. You know, well, again, me, unless I see differently, I have to support that. So do you have any? Any information other than you're superhuman? Okay, okay, okay. Counsel, do we have any questions for? These persons in, uh, before us, or the city manager as relates to this amendment?
No, I just want to say that be, working in this industry and, and having to order inspections and stuff on a daily basis. I, I'm, I fully understand where she's coming from and I know what the workload is. And I just don't, if we're trying to save money, I don't see that this is. This is the right route right now. We're, we're growing too fast right now.
That is an entirely, do you see how that just changed on the dime? An elected official says something different. From this dais. And so now we defer to Ms. Allred. That changed just that quickly, Kathleen. So Ms. Allred, you're suggesting that we may not go this route at this time? Okay, okay. Counsel, do we have any questions or any conversation? Uh, directed toward Ms. Allred's recommendation from. Uh, her experience in her regular life. Did you want to add something, Caesar?
No, sir. Okay.
But I thought.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ms.
I thought we'd be using this. With BBNG. I thought it was, we were doing it together.
The idea is to do it together, yes, ma'am.
So we're not trying to decrease. We're just trying to add.
No, man. Now, it's something that, this was brought up in, in last year's. Budget cycle. Wanted us to look at it. The next possible town that we have thought it would have been towards a budget amendment. Which is what we're looking at now with all twelve of these amendments. And, uh, the idea for this concept is to do. A, a shared responsibility. What that looks like, it also depends. You know, how soon we get somebody hired, right? We're not gonna just say, hey, BBG, we're not gonna send you. No, we, we still need to keep the show going. Right? So this would be until we get somebody on board, should you choose to do so.
I, I would say this, uh, Caesar, how did you get? To a place where you recommend, where you're recommending one? Is that just because that's the natural starting point with one? Is that what that is?
It would be the natural starting point, so we could always have somebody here to, 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 to address.
So you don't have any evidence either that, you don't have any inspection?
Other, other than the fact that we know that on average, as, as Kathy was mentioning, anywhere between. You know, ten to fifteen a day, times twenty days a week. On average, you would hope that one person could do. Roughly on twenty working days a month, three hundred and fifty inspections if they're doing fifteen a day. So yes, I have that number, but besides that number, that's, that's pretty much all I have. Um, we actually were a little bit more modest in that sense, because if, if you take an average of ten inspections a day. Times five days a week, fifty. Times four weeks in a month, theoretically, will be twenty working days. If we have twenty working days, it would be two hundred inspections. With the understanding that Friday is being half day, the average is, you know. Kind of, um, like should average itself out. So in between ten to fifteen per day, we'll, we'll roughly give us that number from two to three hundred dollars. Uh, inspection per, per week.
Thank you for that. Council, um, um. The amendment, uh, amendment nine had, is before us. Uh, did we, uh, do we have a motion to approve? We've heard from Mr. Garcia, we've heard from Ms. Davenport, we've also heard from, uh, Councilwoman Allred. I will entertain a motion to approve or disapprove amendment nine.
So I move to approve.
Is that second? Is that second?
I'll, I'll second it for. Purposes.
Okay. We have a, a motion to approve in a second for discussion purposes. Do we want to discuss this further, counsel?
I moved because I want to make sure that we're using, we're still completing. All of the inspections. Even with BBJG, even with the inspector as well.
Yes, ma'am, we would not. Our, 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 our level of service would not decrease.
Let, let, I would suggest that we do this. If you want to see, let's see if we can, we can, we can bring this together. If, if you want to see if we can become more efficient. Uh. Uh, could we then bring someone in on a temporary basis? Keeping BBG to augment that, track that from. Uh, what is this? From April, April through. April, May, June. Three months. And then that will give you time to present in your, uh, budget. Either a full-time position or a, uh, reversion, if you will, back to, uh, uh, BB, BBG. BBG. Because that would, I think. Kind of. Speak to what Ms. Allred is suggesting, that is, we, we might be overwhelmed. Give you a chance to focus. Uh, the, the work product from that one inspector to see if it's actually more efficient without making that long-term commitment to a person.
Assuming that I can get somebody in April first after second reading on.
I'm, okay.
Mayor, I'm, I'm.
I appreciate that, your, your suggestion. I just think we just need to either agree to this or whatever.
Absolutely.
Uh, otherwise we're getting too convoluted in this.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other, any other comments on amendment nine? There is a motion on the floor to approve. For a new inspector. Uh, and it's seconded. Do you want to, uh, withdraw your second? Are you con- comfortable with continuing the second for approval of an inspector? A new inspector? Joe.
I'm just seconding the motion, I.
Right, so now that we've had, we've had discussion. Do you want to withdraw that second? Because Kim's motion to approve for a new inspector.
Yeah, I was supporting the. Okay, I, I'll vote whatever way I vote.
Very good. If there's no further discussion, uh. Let's call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I don't think that that's.
Yeah, that's not the issue. The issue.
They're saying.
Yeah. We are simply, uh, asking Mr. Garcia to make sure that in every area of our operation, we are being. The most cost-effective and efficient as possible. That's pure, purely all this is about.
And, and Mayor, let me add, and also being responsive to the needs of our developers and business parties, being that customer friendly. That, that, if anything at all, those are some of the items I occasionally hear about, right? Uh, just be gentle with, with our people. Alright.
Can I just clarify?
Please don't.
I have two ayes, Mayor Bell and Councilman Yancy, and then I have three nays. Councilwoman Lava.
The reason that I giggled was because Joe motioned to approve it and then voted against it.
Yeah.
And I, why didn't you just withdraw your motion, Joe? But it's, it's. It's my approach in prerogative. Alright, that was a good laugh. Motion failed, yeah. So we're going to stay with, uh, BBG, uh, and you could then bring something back at the, uh, budget workshop. I, I, I also want.
With those clarifications on the relationship. With, with BBG, I think that.
Absolutely. Are you saying, wait, wait, hold on just a minute, Caesar. Are you saying that we pass this amendment? Tonight with those clarifications?
No, 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 no. I'm just. I've just, as I said.
I think he wants to hear from me next meeting about the term of the contract.
Got you. Oh, I got you. Thank you. Thank you all for that. Thank you. Go ahead, Caesar.
And the only comment I want to clarify with all of these amendments, this is first reading. Then he's still, all, all twelve of these got to come back. So I want to make sure everybody understands.
No, no, no.
No?
If there is an amendment that fails tonight, it will be removed.
I understand that, but thank you for clarification. What I meant to say is. Whatever items passed tonight would come back.
So we are now at amendment ten. Do we want to, is there another place that we are? I guess this is the place for ARPA funds. Am I reading this wrong? This is the place. Okay, thanks.
Unless you want to skip it, come back to it, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, let, let's do, uh, eleven and twelve, and then we can come back and do, uh, and do ten. Uh, amendment eleven, this is. Uh. The. Permit tech moving, uh, from under developmental services. To code enforcement. I will entertain a motion to approve or disapprove.
Move to approve.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Caesar, for the, those that were not. Part of our four o'clock workshop. Could you briefly explain what we're doing here in amendment?
We made a request for development cert, for code to no longer fall under development services. It was moved over to fire. In doing so, one of the admin positions that was attached to it is still under development services. And for formal and proper accounting, we need to move it to where it's new home, which is still under code. But now under, uh, code under fire, not under development services.
Very good. Counsel, any questions? Here, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Amendment twelve. Moving a maintenance worker, this position, uh, is coming from IT. Uh, co- going to IT potentially from public works. Uh, counsel, I will, I will entertain a motion to approve or disapprove.
Motion to approve.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I will say, I do get the reorganization process. I respect it. I believe that, uh, Kyle needs help. I, I will be voting no again on this amendment because it proposes to take a position, not necessarily the person. From the street maintenance department. Uh, and move that to the IT department when we are, are being. Uh, we are being alerted. That many of our residents. Want our streets to be maintained at a higher level. So that is, that's my heartburn with it, and that's why I will be voting against that amendment. Counsel, is there any further discussion?
I, I would like that to ask a question along those lines. That's kind of. Or was that, um? Don't you guys cooperate and collaborate? So Kyle, if you make a request to. Public, I mean, to Rick over here. My guy needs some help going out to this building that you're discussing. Uh, then Rick's, I know Rick's a gentleman and he, he makes. That available, correct? You guys are doing that already?
That, that would be correct. We were doing this merely for more proper accounting, but yes.
Okay, so we're not, we're not hurting you in any way. You can still accomplish. The task, what you're looking for, right, Kyle?
Yeah. Looking to operate most efficiency. And to achieve our operational goals.
Alright, thank you.
Any further discussion? Here, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? What did you say?
Nay.
We need some of those buttons that they have. State House. Some of those, some, some councils do have buttons. Alright, so I, so the conclusion does not need to be voted upon. It, it just says conclusion, uh, thi- this is basically a one hundred fifty thousand dollar. Uh. Amendment that is paying for itself.
Correct. That's a summary of it.
Here, would you please for us? Uh, recite those amendments that actually have made it to the second reading.
Mayor, I'm sorry to bother. We still didn't go back to amendment ten.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that, Caesar. Thank you for that. So before we do that, let's take up. Uh, amendment ten, which is. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that, Caesar. Thank you for that. So before we do that, let's take up, uh, amendment ten, which is the uh, amendment for the ARPA funds designation. Uh, allocation. Uh, and so we will allow for questions and discussion before we actually entertain a motion. Uh, Joe, I know you wanted to revisit this when you returned, so we'll allow Joe to lead us off in the questions, and then we'll jump in.
Well, thank you, man. I, I, I don't know if this is appropriate enough, but I would like to refer to this as our initial allocation. Uh, as opposed to just ma- maybe assuming that we have to do everything.
Oh, I got you.
You know, the full amount. And, um, uh, as I said earlier, the I, I, I kind of worked this as in, in cooking, I think they use the term deconstruct. And I went from, um, from the, um, from, um, we can't find it now, the where is that in this cure? The list of the
Page thirty-four, thirty-five of the attachment.
I can't find it. Anyway, I have to hear. It was, I, I listed, I said, start off with the GLO grant match of the half a million, because we need that for our, our, all our other grants. And, um,
That's the five hundred and sixty thousand.
Or five hundred and sixty, I'm sorry. Just can't read my own handwriting. I'm bipolar and I'd have terrible handwriting too.
And what, what you're, what you're reading to us now is what you are suggesting we approve tonight?
Tonight, yes, sir, tonight. As of, as an initial, that's why I called it, an initial allocation. And then the, uh, the streetlight conversion, that's part of the, our safe city initiative. And get those.
What's that amount?
That, that was two seventy-five, right?
No, sir.
No, what is that?
Uh, streetlight conversion is one sixty-four, six ninety-eight and thirty-seven cents.
One sixty-four?
The original amount that we had was a two seventy-five, but the, the recommended at this time is a one sixty-four, six ninety-eight.
The recommended is, you were just trying to work out some equity on the numbers, but the real need is the two seventy-five?
No, no, Mayor Protem. The real need is one point eight million dollars. That was brought to you when a light study was done. This is a very small dent into that. Our real need is one point eight million dollars. We brought that a few months ago as to what we need to do our entire, what, or our light study said we need to do. To add all the forty-five watt and one hundred watt LED lights we need in the city, approximately one thousand more fixtures. In addition to the current, um, change, this part right here is a very small dent in, into the project, which was just solely.
What's the purpose of this allocation?
Converting, converting LED lights first and foremost. We want to get all of the LED lights converted in the city.
Well, how about new lights?
New lights is, is part of the second and the third phase. The second phase of our light study was to do any roads, any collector roads, additional lighting in dark areas for collector roads. The third phase was more for our residential. The total amount of light, if you remember, our light study that we brought forward was roughly almost a thousand lights, if you allow me a moment to bring it up when we last had it. We had nine hundred and fifty-nine lights that were forty-five watts and two hundred and sixteen lights, a part of the study that we brought to you on, on, uh, back in December, that we brought back to you. Um, two hundred and sixteen, one hundred lot, watt lights. These are all new fixtures. Those two totals combined netted one point eight million dollars, one, one million eight hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred dollars to do all of those new light fixtures. What is being brought to you tonight is the first phase, which was recommending to work very diligently to finish our conversion to LED. Now, we are aggressively pursuing additional funds and grant funding for the rest of this through Safe Streets for, for all. Which is one of the current funding cycles that we're looking to bring back to you in April. As since we have a light study that's completed, we are much more, um, able to bring that forward with actual figures of where we want to put the lights, how much each light costs, and how many lights we need and where.
Our total amount is four point two. Well, says our, this, and council, this two seventy, I'm going to stick with the, the two seventy-five because I want the lights to be replaced, but I also want some amount in there for some new streetlights. To have, Miss, the councilperson, Yancy, has been talking about the new streetlights that are necessary in, in her district, I think. Like Councilperson Brooks as well, too, out there. I know on, there, on Duro, on the other end and out, out toward where you live, there, there's some streetlights, there are dark areas out there, when I drive around. So there's, there's some there for, for new streetlights, and that's why I go with the two seventy-five. Then the sidewalks.
May, may, Mayor Protem, only because I'm trying to follow along. So you're suggesting we increase from the one sixty-four back to the two seventy-five? May I please ask, is there a certain direction that you want to reduce the roughly hundred and ten thousand dollars from to get to the two seventy-five?
The hundred and
The difference between the two?
Obviously, on, on, on my numbers here, this is just an initial, uh, where, let me go through my whole list here, then you'll, you'll come out with the numbers.
Certainly.
And, um, and then the, the sidewalks were the so that's, that's eight, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand right there, those two. And then the sidewalks was a hundred for hu- sidewalk repairs.
Um, I'll go down a sidewalk for me with sidewalk.
Once again, I'm looking at the, the, that first line.
Yes, Mayor, but that's what we originally had.
And that's where I'm going with those numbers. Okay, a hundred thousand there, that's a total of nine thirty-five then, then the, uh, then the, the, uh, soft, is it software? Yeah, so county software for two hundred thousand.
Mayor Protem, I'm so sorry, I just lost you. Under sidewalk repair, you're recommending a hundred thousand instead of fifty.
Right.
Okay.
Hundred thousand. And then the records, the software plus the records. And that brings us into one point one million with that. Then the additional forty-eight for the, for the water usage software, and that gives us a one point two million, and then the, um, street repairs, a total of street repairs, is it repairs? Or when we say repairs, that could be even reconstruction of a street or repaving, correct?
Yes, that would be for those purposes.
To the one million. And that brings us on this initial, my suggestion, is it just my suggestion, on the initial allocation, Mayor, of the two point two two point two thirty-three million on those, in those categories.
Joe, you, uh, you said sidewalk repair. What was, was there something between sidewalk repair and street maintenance? Did I miss something?
Oh, yeah, that was, um, then the, the software, the county software.
County software.
Yeah, the two hundred thousand for that.
So two hundred, not the four eighty-five?
Yeah.
What they're asking for, well, on the software, the, the initial allocation was two hundred thousand, but they fi- they, when I say they, city administration and finance department have found that we're looking at about four hundred, close to five hundred thousand.
Where, where did you get that? That's, I saw that, but where did you get that figure from?
From the vetting.
That city too, Ithaca, they weren't anywhere there. They didn't spend anywhere that amount.
I'm not sure about Ithaca. I know that we've done a lot of different research, different ones, and that's one that we would use Tyler and or ENCODE to discuss that, and Ms. Christine can, can speak more to that. Uh, Tyler is one that a lot of cities use. And this is where that number came from. The real number is much, much higher, but we're trying to be economical.
Yeah, you know, but we're Lamar, we're not, we're not League City.
No, sir. No, we understand, but we're, we're, we're just trying to keep.
I don't mind driving a used car. I'll tell you that.
Well, Lord knows I don't either.
That, that was based on, um, we were really looking at Tyler ENCODE.
Yeah.
Um, and with them, their, uh, installation, professional services, first year maintenance. It was gonna, um, start at around four hundred.
Is this a, is this a bidable? Is this a RFP?
We would need, we would need to put an RFP out to what we'd, we would want to have, correct? But we would have to bid this out. This is just rough estimates as to what we think it would cost preliminary cost.
Then I'll, 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 at least for purposes of this initial, I'll, I'll raise that to three hundred thousand. And then, remember, it's initial. If we're proceeding with an RFP, we, we can come back and add to that amount. Does that make sense?
And, and, and so this is, this is where we need to, so let's want to say, say that tonight, again, in the first reading, what we're doing is we're allocating the full four point two million dollars.
No.
Okay, so what we need to do is we need to allocate the full.
No, sir.
Okay.
Why are you saying that?
Let's see why you're saying that. Is there, is there a reason he's saying that, Gus, or is there some sort of deadline or?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I believe. Talked about the deadline, yeah.
Yeah, there is a deadline, but it's not, it's not today.
Okay, so what we need to do is we need to submit our allocations to whatever they are. Okay? Whatever, choosing whatever items we choose to have or, or, or to not have on. After those selections are made, we have, through the end of twenty twenty-four, those are what our allocations are. Once the clock strikes twelve on end of twenty twenty-four calendar year, we cannot make any changes.
Right.
We can, we can spend more, we can expend more than what we allocate. We would have to eat those costs. But if we expend less for that specific task or purpose or whatever may be, then we lose the difference. We cannot reallocate those funds after twenty twenty-four.
So following that logic, if today, whatever we pass, uh, as an initial allocation, initial we've allocated that, and we're going to come back for a second reading on that, right?
Sure, yes.
On, on that. So next meeting, two weeks from now, we'd have an initial, whatever we agree upon, initial allocation. Um, you're going to go out now, put out an RFP for software.
Amongst other things, correct?
Okay, for software and the digital stuff, you'll have an idea of what the bids come back at.
Correct.
Before the end of the fiscal year.
Correct.
But so if you come back and say, the bids have come in, that we're putting, I'm suggesting three hundred thousand, but you come back and say the bid is actually the lowest one that we have here is, that's acceptable, is four hundred thousand. We're not, we still not at the end of the fiscal year, we, this is an initial allocation. We still have money to allocate in the A, in, in this, in this ARP, ARPA funds. So we can add an initial hundred thousand to meet the, that, that bid, that RFP. Correct?
Correct. I, I would just say this, though. There are other items that are on here that we have requested the actual need for. For example, remounting the ambulances that were on the hook for these next repayments. Well, and then if I can, a lot of the, going back to what was asked of us as we were preparing this, one of the biggest concerns that we had was in the area of public works and the area of streets. We did take the approach of, and I hate to use this old proverb, but, you know, teach a man a fish versus giving him a fish. We need some equipment to make some of these things happen, to make this more efficient. And besides going out for, like we mentioned, some type of bond or, or some type of other mechanism to do so. We need some of this equipment now to increase our efficiencies and get some of this work done. So, I, I, I just, I just, if, if you.
Love your enthusiasm always. I, I, um, I guess, just, I'm an old man now, really am. And, um, but I'm, I'm going to share an experience with the mayor. We were part of a board of directors, where I always remember the finance person coming to us and saying those exact words, we have to do it now, you've got to, to do this. You got, so all, all I'm suggesting in this scenario is that, I don't disagree with you, I don't disagree with you. But tonight, for a first round, it's an initial allocation that we've got something done here that are priorities, that I feel are important, like the GLO set aside, I mean, the matching stuff like that, right? And the software. And then next, next, next meeting, we take another little bite of this of this wonderful apple.
May I also comment, Mayor Protem? I'm sorry to interrupt you. When we did the bond allocation sheet, when we had those projects that were left over, that we knew there was an amount that other one million dollars underwater allocation, water and sewer, we've technically already allocated through those other um, funds as allowable expenses. So where you talk about, Kyle, move up a second here, if you don't mind, right above the five sixty under public works, there, right there, the one million dollars in water and sewer repair, that one million is already accounted for. Tonight, you actually have an update on your CO bond projects, where you will once again see that uh, already listed on there. And some of those projects were shovel-ready and ready to start construction on. As a matter of fact, we're going to be about to be scheduling, so to your point.
That, that's great, then, then I can out.
Then, then we will.
To your suggested amount.
So, so, so let's, I, I don't know what just happened here between, between y'all. And I'm, I'm presiding over the meeting. So you're saying that there, there's one million dollars of water and sewer repair that we have allocated, uh, tentatively, tentatively
Yes.
allocated in the ARPA funding that is already, uh, financially taken care of. So that was free one million dollars of from what, in what we're dealing with tonight to redirect.
No, sir.
Okay.
The one million, so right where it says the one million dollars, right? Under our CO, um, projects that we have, the one million and the five sixty, you have tentatively already allocated those funds from the leftover projects that we could not complete with our CO bonds. And you, you'll see that again tonight, but we brought this forward.
You're saying they are already applicable.
Essentially, you've already obligated without obligating them efficiently, if that makes sense.
So we have to at least make a formal decision on those, is what you're saying?
Those were the, yes.
That's why you're, that's why it's so urgent. Those are urgent.
Those two are urgent because we kind of already said we were doing that, because if not, then we.
So, so let me ask you this, Caesar. Before we get into this discussion that Mayor Protem is suggesting, as far as what may be a better use for those funds as opposed to your recommendation. The first part of this question, is it possible to have a series? And I don't, I'm not saying I agree or disagree, we're just trying to get clarity. Is it possible to have a series of votes? Uh, tonight, we allocate half a million dollars, next meeting, we allocate three million dollars, whatever those numbers would be. Is there something wrong with his, uh, question? Can that be done?
I caution, to answer your question, Mary, yes, it can be done, but I do caution that allocating certain funds are inevitably, if we end up spending some of those funds, some of these other items that has been expressed as priorities through, from this council, from the public or through the survey we completed, we may not have enough funds to address. And, and that's my only, whatever, whatever the world.
Yeah, I got you. Well, um, counsel, Mayor Protem has, uh,
I say, you know, and I hate to kick this can one more time, but I say we all go sit down and figure out what we want to see in twenty twenty-four, because when I look at it, I would like to see the flock cameras, water and sewer repair before we do the street repair, because if they co-mingle, then it's, we've got to, you know. Um, GLO grants, the streetlight conversion, the ambulance remounts, and then all the, the software stuff. So I think that's kind of a priority for twenty twenty-four to get done. And then for twenty twenty-five, let's look at the street repairs instead of, you know, that way we can dig, start the bottom and work our way to the top of our repairs.
It didn't have, it has to be allocated though, but now, everything has to be approved.
So, we, we, it is suggested that we allocate the entire amount, and if we want to change it without going over, then at that time, we want to do that before the deadline.
Cause we've kind of gone back over this over and over again, uh, up and down several times, so that's why I'm like, I'm doing this again.
Yeah, so, um, you, you're going to need an answer, and we're going to have to allocate, uh, Mayor Protem brought some, some possible changes. I don't know that the council necessarily likes the idea of a, a successive meeting where we allocate funds to Mayor Protem's suggestion. I do like the idea that we, uh, once and for all have a meeting with you to talk about those things that are important to us, so that it can be distilled down, so that we can have it before us and we can make decisions based on that. For example, Mayor Protem, uh, wants to see more money in street, uh, repair. Um, Mr. Ross, who didn't say he doesn't want the streets to be repaired, is questioning whether or not we would be able to do uh, street repair along with, uh, water, sewer maintenance, right? So the council has to see that, I think, uh, see those arguments on paper, so that we can decide. And then I'm sure Kim would have, Ms. Yancy would have some, Kim's my friend, I keep calling Kim. Ms. Yancy would have some, Ms. Allred is also my friend. But I call her Ms. Allred, it's weird, but anyway, anyway, you get, you get my point. I think that we all need to be able to weigh in, in a thoughtful way. Right now, we're having a back and forth, and we're missing a lot of what one another's saying. So could we possibly have this settled by the second meeting in March, where we can, go ahead?
Yes, Mayor, absolutely. Um, and again, and I'll, I have to yield to Gus. Yes, Mayor, absolutely. Um, and again, and I'll, I have to yield to Gus and care on this. What we're, what we requested tonight, if you look down below at the bottom of this screen, go all the way down to the bottom, Kyle. The total there, we're allocating, if you notice the figures, would be roughly, in whatever order we expended, roughly one million sixty eight to be expended in twenty four, roughly, uh, two million one twenty seven in FY twenty five and roughly to FY twenty six being, uh, one million six, six sixty, one million sixty thousand, excuse me. If, for example, you wanted to pass that tonight, and you wanted to make, correct me if I'm wrong, a slight modification in those numbers, can that be done that way? And I ask for that from, from, from your perspective, to make sure that we're following the rules that we need to follow, from, from a perspective there. As long as by second reading, I have an allocation if I can to move these things forward, because, for example, some of these projects may need to be engineered. They need to then go out to bid. I don't know that we'll be able to get them, all of them complete, and the construction has to finish so I can make the payment by the end of the fiscal year. That's why some of them are pigeonholed as FY twenty five versus twenty four.
Is the work being done now? Is the work currently being done, being done?
Some of that work is being done, yes, sir. Yeah, or if it's not being, we're, we're starting the engineering, we haven't maybe had groundbreakings and so forth to, to physically start the construction.
So will, will two weeks, and this is just a question, will two weeks put us in, in a difficult position, just two more weeks?
Absolutely not. I don't think it would at all. Again, is the idea to vote today on something and then come back.
That, that, no.
Table completely.
My, my thought is to table it completely so that, uh, each council person can visit with you to, maybe, maybe we don't have changes, but some of us may. To say, I want to take, you know, five dollars out of this line item and put it in this line item. So you could then compile that, so that when we get to, you know, certain things, well, Mr. Ross wants this, Ms. Yancy wants that, you know, so that we can see it in front of us.
Certainly.
And, and make that decision instead of trying to just discuss it and losing track of projects, dollar figures.
May I answer your question with a question? Can we pass amendments, all the other amendments and table ten alone?
If you take ten out, you would need to bring it back separately.
As a separate amendment, as a separate, essentially a separate budget.
That is an option that you have, or if you want to table item ten, but keep it as part of the budget amendment, you would need to table the whole budget amendment. If that makes sense.
Let's just, let's just take, let's just deal with it alone, because it's, a-again, if you have a Mayor Protem asking for a million dollars in street repair, when, when there is in, in the allocation of seventy five thousand, that's a, that's a large gap.
Sure.
And we won't be effective tonight trying to calmly, thoughtfully, considerately, um, navigate these numbers. It just won't fit. It's, it's.
Mayor, have a question. Clarify if I'm accurate in saying this, as I heard you say something along these lines. It would give us guidance, I think, as we go back and look. You suggested that perhaps we should go ahead at the very least, like pass a, um, pass the fiscal year amounts. Did I hear you say that?
That was, that was one of the options, uh, along.
Uh, without specifying project, but you're giving us our little budget amount per year.
That, that was one of the options, Mayor.
Yeah, I, I, I could understand that, because then that'll, as I'm working out numbers and
With, with the understanding that.
Do you understand what he was saying, Mayor?
I, I do. I just think we need to be very intentional and deliberate about what we are, where, where, uh, earmarking and, and what we're approving, because we, to, to, to take the work that was done by having our community partners, our, our residents here going through that capital improvement committee and that process, to then, you know, we, we would have had to alter it, because the council obviously has a better, uh, position to see some of those needs and how we would fund them.
Sure.
Uh, but to take it apart and to start over, even if it's just to set a dollar figure, I, I think is unwise. I think the best course of action is for us to get with you within these next two weeks to make recommendations on, you know, how we want to change or amend what you presented. And then have a, a more of a, an informed discussion next meeting with the understanding that we cannot leave that meeting without taking action.
My only question is, these numbers are what our budgets are for each fiscal year. Can it budge up and budge down as long as it meets the four point two five five?
Yes, to answer your question, yes. However, the reason why those colors are there and color coded by year is because we've allocated what our recommended numbers were by calendar year, by project. And that's why they came up to be those totals. We not only separated this by department, but we also separated by fiscal year where we expect to expand those particular funds in our recommendation made. However, we need to come back to the table and then recalculate based on, on what the decision would be.
Yes, sir.
Um, Gus, I saw you lean into your microphone. Did you want to add something?
Nope.
Okay.
No, he came with the dress.
Gus, Gus is a smart man. Counsel, we have discussed this at length tonight and in our workshop. Uh, Mayor Protem was, uh, was unable to uh, arrive at our workshop. Obviously, he had, uh, personal matters he had to attend to. And so again, I would recommend that for the last time, we table this uh, so that we can give Caesar a better, more, uh, informed and concise um, recommendations from our districts. So I will entertain a motion to table amendment number ten.
No, make a motion to remove ten from the budget amendment.
Let's do that then, uh, instead. I will ma, I will do what James asked me, I'm scared. I will entertain a motion to remove item amendment ten from this list and, uh, address it next meeting. How about that?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who, who made the motion?
I made, I made a motion. Uh, we are now, let's, let's go back, counsel, and jump up to seven and eight. Uh, I am, as the chair of this meeting, advising us to table this uh, because Ms. Nance, uh, could not with certainty, uh, validate or confirm the posting. So in order to make sure we are not misstepping, I will entertain a motion to table seven and eight tonight.
Good, so moved.
The second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Let's pick back up nine, two. Proposed resolution authorizing application submission to the Department of Homeland Security, DHS FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, AFG Program. Mr. Garcia, are you, uh, the person to?
Yes, um, we do have our fire department here for any assistance. What this, what this particular, um, opportunity is, is, uh, grants that we're pursuing, um, equipment purchases for some of the things that we have requested. Coincidentally, some of these were on the original ARPA list, or we, we have, um, expressed an interest and or need from our fire department to have, uh, these are covered in your agenda form. Um, the match, the, the best, best part about this match, it is only requiring a five percent match. Uh, should be funded for the entire amount. We're looking at a five, um, thousand, excuse me, five percent match totaling no more than nineteen thousand six hundred and forty two dollars. Um, the list of all the items requested is included herein. It includes, uh, more roll of portable radios, um, thermal imaging cameras, um, power live cotton power lift system and twenty sets of turnout gear. I will entertain any questions, Mayor.
Any questions for Mr. Garcia? Uh, I, I see Deputy Chief Yardley in the back. Any questions for Mr. Garcia or Deputy Chief, uh, Yardley as it relates to this item?
This is, this is for the police department or fire?
Fire. We're requesting to submit a grant for these items.
Well, some of the things were listed on that ARPA.
They were, but we requested not to fund them because we were looking for grant funds to possibly purchase them with.
Right.
Any questions? Not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here you know, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine, three, proposed resolution.
Sorry, just for the record, it's, uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero zero one six.
Twenty twenty four, zero, zero, one, six.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Kiara. Nine, three, proposed resolution authorizing application submission to seek membership in the AARP livable community program. Mr. Garcia?
Yes, uh, Mayor, we are, uh, attaining to seek membership as part of ARP. Uh, we, we, we know that our community is a veteran community and a, um, safe place for our seniors to be. ARP supports, uh, that through a lot of different programs that they have. They're currently, um, ten cities in the state that are members. We are, uh, soliciting membership. It is a no cost membership if we're qualified. But, um, being members does engage us and allow us to apply for certain grants, so we are hereby requesting membership uh, to, to apply for consideration, uh, to be part of ARP, to bring more senior, uh, services and best practices to our community.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Garcia? Hearing now, we will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine, four, proposed resolution authorizing application submissions for various AARP community challenge grants, grant programs. Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the same previous item through ARP, here are two subsequent grants that we would like to submit for. Uh, coincidentally, that we've already completed applications for. One is a walkability audit or a walking audit. Another one is a bike audit. As you know, we've made significant efforts toward making our city more pedestrian and bike friendly. Want to continue doing so and create more livable communities for our, for our residents. And these are two applications. Again, these are no match needed, and we like your support in doing so and moving forward.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Garcia? Hearing now, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine, five.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a, uh, request, this one is from our police department. This is a different, uh, this is a public safety grant as well, uh, part of our, the Operation Lone Star Grant. Uh, Galveston was included as, uh, was added as a disaster declaration in January of twenty twenty four. Thus making us eligible for this grant that before we were not eligible. Some of the things that we're requesting are sixty five, uh, portable radios, forty body worn cameras, ten in car cameras, one camera tower, and twenty five bulletproof vest. Uh, our, our public safety and our police department is leading this application that we're requesting for you. These items are listed in the respective department CIP plan draft that we brought to you for, for review. And we're seeking approval to submit this grant. This one is a no match grant that we are hoping to, uh, be funded for with your support.
Very good. I, I wanted to, uh, share with our community that, uh, this, uh, grant, that the purpose of this grant is to, it's a program to enhance inter-agency border security operations, to enhance inter-agency border security operations. We live on the Gulf Coast of the great state of Texas, uh, and many of our residents, uh, in this, uh, agenda item and in your report, want to know if uh, this will help us, if there are any, uh, potential issues that overflow into Galveston County from the border. Is this something that will help us address that?
Uh, this application will not only help us in the day to day, but should that be a need, Mayor, yes, these, these items that we're requesting herein uh, would be things that would help us, um, in that charge.
Very good. So for those of our residents that are concerned with activities at the border, uh, and if potentially they might uh, spill over into our city, uh, we, this council, uh, we are accepting support to make sure that we are as protected as we possibly can be.
Yes, Mayor.
Very good. Any, uh, further questions before we entertain a motion for Mr. Garcia as it relates to this grant?
I, I, Mayor, I don't, where, where did you get all that stuff from about this grant?
Well, it basically says, uh, in the staff briefing, it says, the purpose of this program is to enhance inter-agency border security operations. And so I was asking Mr. Garcia, is, uh, this grant associated with the, uh, some of the issues we have heard as relates to the border? Uh, is that where this grant is coming from? Uh, and is that what this grant is designed to do? It says inter-agency border security operations. And so I wanted to drill down on that to bring clarity to our residents. It's on page one eighty seven, Joe, of your packet numbered by your, uh.
I, I see that, but I guess it's.
It's right up here in the purpose of the grant.
But this purpose, let me ask Chief, this is not having anything to do with the, with the, um, SB two about, um, uh, arresting individuals on sight uh, because they, they quote, might look like they're undocumented. We're not involved.
Would you, yeah, would you, would you speak to that, Chief?
Mayor President, I, I'll, Chief joins us. I, I can speak to that. No, it does not include that at all. This is simply something that we have become eligible since January of twenty four.
Nothing to do with that, Mayor Protem. It's a grant of, the governor designated Galveston County as a border area in January of twenty four with reasons that the city manager was mentioning, for safety and so forth. These are all items that will assist public safety and supporting uh, border security, and it's no match, and we couldn't beat that.
Right.
Alright.
Yeah, and, and, and again, that for, for clarification purposes, many of our community members ask me from time to time. Um, are we receiving any help? Uh, a, a, again, we live close to the border.
Correct.
Some of our citizens, our residents, uh, are, uh, concerned. And so what we're saying is as a community, we are receiving all of the help we can, not to do anything other than to make sure that we are equipped and prepared for any issues
Exactly.
that may, uh, arise. And, and that's, that's all we're saying, uh, in this, uh, in the, uh, reception of this grant. That we're, we're trying to be prepared.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Uh, where are we, Kiara, with, uh?
I, I need a motion.
I will entertain a motion to accept, uh, item nine, five.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine, six. I'm sorry.
For the record, I'm, uh, abstaining. I need to find out a little bit more about that.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Yancy. Nine, six. Uh, code of ethics for elected and appointed officials. Discussion possible action regarding adoption of a code elected, a code of ethics for an elected and appointed officials. Again, counsel, uh, I brought to us a, uh, the travel policy and this discretionary spending policy as we grow as a council, as we become, uh, more inclined to receive education. Uh, we, uh, we, uh, added policy, uh, as we now, uh, uh, trying to add, uh, more of, uh, an ethics code of conduct for elected officials as we grow and as we try to improve, uh, and be better council people. Tonight, uh, because I brought this, I simply, I would like for us to, uh, look at it, uh, submit, uh, to Mr., uh, to Mr. Garcia and to Ms. Nance any corrections, any areas of heartburn, any things that we like, things that we don't like. Because this policy will, uh, will guide us, not govern us, will guide us as council people. I remember when I was, uh, a newly elected council person. Uh, if it had not been for some of those persons that were, were serving with me, like a, a former council member, James Osteen, I would not have, uh, uh, been able to understand uh, fully the role of a council person and how we ought to conduct ourselves. Uh, and so again, this is an initial offering. It's, uh, not etched in stone. It is our policy and we have to, we have to shape it in a way that best fits us. Uh, so, um, unless there's any questions or any discussion tonight, uh, I just wanted us to look at it. Visit with Kiara, next meeting, have a better, more defined policy that we can actually discuss.
I had a couple of things that I.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm, page twelve of nineteen. It says, um,
It says, um, for council to not attend city staff meetings unless requested by staff. Even if the elected or appointed official does not say anything, his or her presence implies support, blah, blah, blah. Um, I think, I don't like the wording on that. Um, we should be able to attend any city meeting if we so choose. Um, I don't know what that, the intent of that is.
Kiara, would you, you, you got this from, would you help us to understand the history of this document?
Yes. Okay. So this document is a culmination of some of the best practices documents that, uh, were given to us by, um, TML as well as some sister cities that we have that have won awards for this type of thing. So we just kind of took what they had and tried to make it fit towards us. Um, that particular area, I question myself, don't, because I was like, huh? But they're most, mostly for, and that is in relation to like internal operational meetings, um, and that is done basically for compliance necessarily with our charter, just because technically as elected officials, you guys aren't supposed to be involved in operations, um, per se. That's why other cities have that place there. Like I said, you, like Mayor said, you guys are totally in charge of this document. If you want it removed, as a council, you guys can have it removed.
So let me, just to clarify from, from Ms. Arred and from my identification as well. You, we are not saying that we can't, if, if she wanted to attend an economic development council meeting or a parks board meeting.
Yeah, no, those are, that's not what.
You're saying if Caesar is meeting with Rick, for example.
Correct.
Unless she is, unless she has scheduled that meeting.
A morning meeting.
With his staff.
Staff.
Got you.
It, the implication would be, or what's implied is that if one of you weren't invited to attend the staff meeting, then yes, but if it's just, you know, we know that every, I don't know, Thursday afternoon at two o'clock, Rick meets with his staff. Council members aren't sitting in those staff meetings just because it can be intimidating for staff just because you guys are the council.
Sure. Maybe we should like change that wording around a little bit to.
Okay.
Absolutely. The spirit of, of the intention has been caught. Let's make sure though, we err to Ms. Arred's point, we err on the side of council people have the right and the freedom to act as council people. And so let's clearly spell out what we are intending.
And then also on page thirteen at the very bottom, um, the city clerk serves as advisory parliamentarian for the council and city. Shouldn't that be and or the attorney or should that be the attorney by himself?
So, yeah, generally it's the city clerk and then she works. When she steps out, I'll take notes for her just, um, but it, it's, and then she asks me if she has questions. But she is the arbiter of the city records and, and so.
Long document.
It's a long document.
I, I.
You couldn't read it, Joe?
No, I fell asleep at the hospital. I'll be right out.
Ms. Arred.
I think that's all I have right now.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, we are, we have time. This is, this has no uh, the, no time sensitivity. This is work that we can do hopefully to help those councils that will come after us to give them a, 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 a guiding star. Um, so that we won't have as many questions or concerns as we, we tend to run into. Any, any further questions on this?
I did just have clarification. Someone could clarify this. It says elected and appointed officials. Wha- wha- what's the definition of the appointed? Are we referring to our committee members or what?
Yes, so this, this ethics policy would also apply to your appointed positions, which would be the boards and commissions members. And the, as it applies to the role that they serve.
Well, shouldn't we perhaps also distribute it to them to get their feedback, uh, as well? Uh, just to because we're going to expect them to abide by it.
That would be something that we definitely could look at. We can, we could, we could distribute this to every committee head. Uh, and make sure that those committees have it placed on their agenda at some, at some point.
Yes, I was gonna say, we could, after, since this comes to you this first time, if it's the will of the council, we can have it placed on everyone's next meeting for them to review, if you'd like.
Do we want, Joe, picking your brain? Do we want to have council, uh, pare this down perhaps? And then offer it to, uh, the committees before we, uh, adopt it finally? Because that's, to your point, that's a lot of information.
That might be, let's, let us kind of pare it down and then
Yeah.
take that document, yeah.
And then, and then, and then allow them to weigh in. This side, council, what, what do we, does that sound like a plan?
We, I'd like us to tear it down and then.
Okay.
Then present it to our council, to our selected boards and stuff.
Okay. Let's, uh, let's work on this council, uh, in the, uh, next two weeks, provide, uh, Mr. Garcia and Ms. Nance with a pared down version. Uh, we can refine it in the council meeting two weeks from now. Uh, approve the distribution of it to the committees for a comment. And then we'll have final approval, uh, perhaps end of April. Very good. We don't need to.
This has to do with elected officials, not candidates.
Elected officials and then appointed officials, i.e. committee persons on our various boards and commissions. Thank you, council, for your consideration. We will move now to item ten, city manager's report. A submitted report to update council and community on the standard operations of the city. Report can be acknowledged as a whole or discussed at the pleasure of council. Council, are there any of these subcha- subsections of item ten that we would like to pull for discussion?
Um, well, I'd like to pull traffic signalization.
Which one is that?
Uh, ten, eight.
Ten, eight. Okay. And then what else? I'm going.
Oh, and ten, nine. Yeah.
Okay, two, uh, ten, nine. Any other persons?
I'd like to see, um, and I don't even have to, we can just get, I didn't see anything in the minutes that broke down. Ten, seven. But then again, I was kind of in a hurry dealing with insurance at the same time, because I was going on through all this. And seven?
I thought we, I thought, I thought the worst supplied some stats for ten, seven. I know. Did you see him, Joe?
Well, I see here, but I don't know where you, your guys are getting this. That, that's a, isn't that seven? Oh, ten, seven.
Ten, seven. Ten, yeah, ten, number ten on the agenda, seven. Miss, uh, Nance?
Yeah, no, there are staff in the, in the.
I'd like to hear this. I, I have some questions on this stat.
Okay, so we'll pull ten, seven. Any others? Caesar, I have ten, seven, ten, eight and ten, nine. Caesar, I would like for you to briefly explain, um, um, well, I'd like for you to explain ten, five very briefly. Uh, and I know that there are important announcements that you would like to make on ten, one and ten, three, because I, I think Amy's here. So there's some library uh, programming and some youth summer programs. So I have ten, one, ten, three, ten, five, ten, seven, eight and nine.
Ten, one, ten, three, ten, five, ten, seven, eight and nine.
And one, three and five, pretty much are you making brief comments on those?
Certainly. Um, I guess we'll start with, uh, ten, one. Just very briefly, those are some of the items that are coming up. I'll ask Kyle to please put the flyers or public view, but also for everybody here to see. We're excited to have a lot of things going on both this week and through the end of the, the month that we have available, as well as others that we're still planning. So this is the only things we have today to, to share with you. But we have a game night that we have put together, uh, for March twenty-eighth. Um, we also have a job training class that we are partnering with our Galveston, um, uh, the RCC that we are very lucky to have as partners through an MOU that will be having that class. And then also we're having a bit of, uh, s- spring break activities that we're doing. That takes us item ten, one, ten, three. Uh, Kyle, if you don't mind, the spring break, um, library activities, this is a, a breakdown of some of the things that we're doing for, excuse me, for summer youth programming. These are some of the days that we've set so far. We are still working on a much more robust spring break program that we're still finalizing details. We had another very lengthy meeting today uh, to bring back to you some information, but this is what we will be doing at the library at a minimum. Uh, as far as these activities that are here, we're still working on finalized details of having a much more robust summer camp program. So this is gonna, this is there now. And we'll be bringing you more information on what we have as a full holistic summer camp program that we're hoping to have as, 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 as long as six weeks that are finalized, isn't the details and locations as to where we're offering. Uh, item ten, five. Do you mind, uh, Kyle, going to ten, five? This is the item that we, uh, discussed as far, no, keep going. That's ten, three. There we go. Could you blow that up a little bit, please? This is our allocation of our bonds, uh, thus far. This sheet probably looks familiar to you. Scroll down just a little bit. You notice, uh, last quarter, we, we, we want to bring these two on a quarterly basis. Uh, you had, uh, a total of four point, almost roughly four point four million dollars of projects to allocate for bond projects. This table represents what those projects essentially are. And it also shows which ones have been completed. Those are the ones that are shown in green. The ones in, um, in yellow are ones that are currently in progress and we're nearing completion. And lastly, the one in orange are the ones we are finishing engineering and will soon be having, uh, water line projects for. Kyle, if you could scroll all the way to the right, please, if you don't mind. If you notice down that number there at the bottom, that one million five hundred and sixty thousand is derived from those projects that were listed above. That is the GLO match amounts, as well as some of the other ones even allocated towards the water line projects, one of which will be breaking ground here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, here as far as the Main Street Waterline Project, which is a major project that we're doing. So if we have any questions there, we can pause here if it's okay. So any questions on that item before I move on?
And any questions for Mr. Garcia on CO bond update?
And, and that Main Street Waterline Project will, will also include the allocation from Tech Dot for the new sidewalks, correct?
Say that again?
Right, Main Street?
It is not tied to that.
I know, but that, but that's.
We're trying to hurry up and get that done so we can bring the sidewalks.
Bring the sidewalks.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So whether we do it for the bar screen or the, the water line project, either or, we are very anxious to get these projects started. We are ready to go on these projects with your continued support. Item ten, seven is our public work stats. Uh, we're trying a new formula, a new way of presenting these to you. Uh, so item ten, seven shows you what those projects, those look like for the month. I want to take, uh, a particular notice, but on the next one, Kyle, believe it's the very next one. That's actually highlighting our water leadership institute. It wasn't one of the items we pulled, but we did have one of our staff members who applied and did receive acceptance of the water, uh, leadership institute. So we're excited for Shannon on that. Sorry as we scroll through. The next item we asked us to pull was the public work stats for January and February. Uh, brief synopsis shows you highlights exactly what we've been able to do. Um, obviously the major attack that we're trying to have throughout the year has been directed towards our water loss. You remember back when we started working together on these projects? Our water loss exceeded sixty-one percent. We're attacking that water loss. We're, we're happy to report that we're closer to forty percent as of the end of twenty twenty-three. So in two years, we have had some significant, uh, losses in water. We want to continue attacking that. What we're working on is a better way to display this. So we want to have similar how we showed you report for our sales tax and our expenses, a monthly water loss report that you'll be getting in your package. So we can get, get, get there. We know we're nowhere near where we want to be. Our, our goal is to get under fifteen percent realistically to have, uh, through flushing and so on and so forth. We want to continue to have that type of progress. So these are your stats for those. And I want to highlight in particular the different areas where the projects were highlighted. Uh, if you notice, a lot of the projects were consumed in streets. Uh, stormwater, obviously a lot of, uh, culvert cleaning as part of that, start of that stormwater crew that we have. Uh, and a lot of the sewer work that was done by, by everybody. So kudos, everybody there for the amount of projects completed in such a short amount of time.
And, Mr. The Manager, I think that, that we've not really given this the recognition. I, 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 we should have a campaign. I don't know, it comes to mind. LaMarcus going dry. That might be something, right? We're, we're, we started off at a sixty percent water loss.
Yeah. I think it was at highest sixty-three at one point. Rick, correct me if I'm wrong.
And when, when I first brought this up and that, and this is historically, this goes back, you can go to the old Galveston County Dale, the LaMarcus Times even that existed, that this was out there. So this is significant in terms of the water saving. And then the fact that the Gulf Coast Water Authority has reimbursed us a hundred and seventy-five thousand in, in, uh, for overchargers in fiscal year twenty-three based upon the reduction in actual water purchases. This, this is newsworthy. This is.
I, I, I agree, Mayor. I, Mayor Protem, excuse me. Um, I agree wholeheartedly. Um, we discussed this Thursday when I, I sat and reviewed, we did a final review of, of the agenda. And I did tell Rick that we need to do a full campaign highlighting some of these, um, incredible highlights that we closed the calendar year with. Uh, actually, the fiscal year with and, uh, to also highlight the work that's being done. So we're excited about what we're doing. And I think we really are moving in the right direction, both in our water loss and our, in our consumption and our work, record work with leaks. I, I think we still have a long way to go. Um, we're very far from the fifteen percent that we'd like to be at. Um, but we're definitely making some strides. So we will do a better job of highlighting that. I've challenged Rick to work with, uh, JB and our communications team to get that done. So we, we're hopeful we can get some, 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 some really good, uh, notice of that as to, as to the stride that we've made.
Um, I, I also wanted to add, uh, in this report and, and again echo Mayor Protem's comments, this is not just noteworthy, this is newsworthy. There's a difference. I say to you and, and I say to JB all the time, you have to let people know of what we are doing and the successes of your administration. That is a tremendous feat to go from over sixty percent water loss to under forty percent water loss, to the point that you are suggesting to us that we have, you didn't say this, but I did, so much water, uh, revenue from, 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 uh, uh, our water deliverables that you are, uh, recommending that we add staff persons.
To keep driving that.
To keep driving, right. Not just to add staff persons. I get your point. But, but the point is, is it, it's a remarkable story. And it is another indicator that it is sunny in LaMarcus.
The sun's drying out all, all the leaks.
Sunny and dry.
Sun's drying out.
I wish you would have been there with us, Mayor Protem. You would have yelled out, and dry. Uh, I will say this, uh, the other part that I, I think that we should mention is the program. This program with Republic Services, this program, this discharge agreement, uh, for their, for their, um, their sludge is what it is. Uh, we've been operating with them for five months and we've experienced no problems with the flow. Uh, and the feared copper problem is non-existent.
Yes.
So it's working. This program is working so far. It is providing, it's provided over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of revenue to our city in just five months. So we wanted to point out, uh, not in a, not in a, a, a way of a, a braggadocious way, but in a, uh, way that we are, uh, having concern for the people's concern about copper. It's non-existent. This program so far has been working according to plan.
Yes, Mayor. Appreciate, uh, admitting support on that. I know it was a, a, a delicate subject, one that we teetered with and did subsequent research on for over a year before we brought it back. Uh, but we're, we, we're happy to report that we are still holding strong.
Very good. Thank you, Caesar. We'll go to ten, eight. Ms. Yancy wanted to speak to us about ten, eight, traffic signalization. Yes. Oh, you wanted him to.
Yeah.
Miss, Mr. Garcia, was your address?
So, um, we have taken into account the fact that many folks have, have requested this. Um, we have made requests to Tech Dot being that, that that intersection is technically part of a Tech Dot Road, uh, Texas Ave. We have made that request for that intersection. The last request, uh, we've made two requests, one in February, one in March. Uh, we have yet to receive word from them, but we have discussed that both in writing and in person. We did so when we had to go do the Delaney Road closure emergency management meeting. Uh, we are hopeful that we can get that done. It is on their radar. Uh, but we know Techside doesn't want to commit until they have a plan and so on and so forth. We're to continue nudging on behalf of the residents. We do know that is a concern. To make that an actual street light, no longer a flashing light. And that's the very first concern that we would have to get done there in that area to provide that traffic. In addition to that, I will also say we have gone to Amazon. We have requested a meeting with them about redirecting their trucks and making sure they're using the proper outlets. Uh, we do know the burden that the construction on forty-five has caused them as far as where they're going, but it's, we're, we're all in this together. Uh, so we're hopeful we can get those trucks redirected as soon as possible.
Okay, so, uh, especially for the traffic study, are we going to do that traffic, that with text?
That's what we're asking them to do. So it is their road and we would look at them being the ones to provide that, that information.
And so they're saying that they can't conduct the traffic study?
They haven't responded yet.
Are they someone?
We haven't responded yet, but we've already made two requests in writing and are waiting for their response.
Okay.
We hope to have one here, hopefully in time for the next meeting.
Okay.
There's, uh, FYI. I think the, having the meeting on Wednesday, the traffic, the H GAX. The regional, I shouldn't even call it H GAX, the Regional Transportation Budget Committee. And I'll get that information to you, but, uh, I think it's a collaborative thing between Texas City and Lamarck should be considered. The monies, the funding for projects for twenties, for twenty-seven. We're gonna start asking for those, right? And with all that new developments, they're in the west side, you know, the new homes on the other side. Uh, the dog track and things. I think you mentioned too, that there are plans already, we were told about expanding seventeen sixty, I mean, uh, yeah, Texas Avenue.
Yes, uh, we, we, in the same meeting, in the same request, we were told that there have been plans for the widening of seventeen sixty-five. Um, the, the growth is almost there to the point of needing that. Uh, and it's something they also have on their radar. They've told us that when they're ready to disclose, they're ready for announce whatever funding and necessarily that, that they will do so then. Tech stock is listening. We are, we are getting some, some, some way. But I wanted to provide that as an update since I know a lot of residents have asked us and also asked you guys for that information. Want to provide an official update on that.
Thank you.
Um, item ten nine, uh, this is item that, three items that I asked for you to. Elaborate on ten, ten nine. The first one is the commercial vehicle enforcement. I've asked you. Uh, to, uh, bring a proposal back to this council. One of the things that we talked about in our budget workshop as we have grown our sworn officers. Is the return, are you listening, Chief? Chief, I know you're listening.
Chief, if, uh, if you could approach, please, because I know this.
I know you, I know you're listening, chief.
Is, uh, is, is more for you and then we'll, we'll go down the list for, with Rick on the next one.
You look like, you look like you got a lot of information you want to share, but here's what we're talking about, chief. Uh, one of the things the council has shared with you, with, uh, Mr. Garcia. About the allocation of these new sworn officers is a return to traffic enforcement.
Yes, sir.
We had at one time two, uh, officers assigned to traffic enforcement. I believe, uh, my, my vote is that we return to two officers for traffic enforcement. However, I think that one of those officers should also be a, uh, commercial vehicle enforcement unit.
Yes, sir.
Historically, uh, there has been heartburn and consternation. About commercial vehicles driving through our city, in particular, bless you, in particular on FM five nineteen. Leonard Payne, who is a longstanding resident, former employer of our city, uh, and, um, uh. Leader of this cause. Constantly talks to me and I'm sure others of us about the safety of those commercial vehicles on five nineteen. Uh, especially, uh, moving through, although it's, uh, much of it is designated commercial, there are still residents. On five nineteen, uh, there's a daycare on five nineteen. So. Uh, uh, five nineteen, seventeen sixty-five, uh, seventeen sixty-four, highway three, uh, one forty-six. Uh, I forty-five, all of these major thoroughfares that move through our city, especially. Uh, the fact that we're situated next to Texas City, this huge.
Yes, sir.
Uh, chemical refinery, uh, environment. Suggests that we need to have a commercial vehicle enforcement division. Uh, I believe it will be very fruitful for us. Uh, as relates to keeping our community safe. I am one hundred percent behind this, the, the development of this unit. Uh, Texas City has, uh, had one and it is, it has proven to work for them.
Yes, sir.
Um, many officers I speak to, uh, speak very highly of this program. And so I want to make sure that, again, we're moving forward with this. Chief, did you want to speak to that? You, you don't have to. I just wanted to share that with you.
Uh, we, uh, City Manager and I talked about last week. That it's part of our, uh, you know, the grant of the six offices that we received from the cops grant. Uh, the, the, the basic idea is to use, have two three-man, three-person teams. And the teams would, would have a dual purpose. One part of it would be community policing. They would work their community policing areas in a dedicated basis during maybe half the, half of the week. The other half, they would do what we call neighborhood safety teamwork, which would be exactly what you're talking about, Mayor. They would do traffic enforcement, directed patrol actions and things such as that, and also commercial vehicle enforcement. So that, that was mentioned to Caesar. It's in, uh, it's in that little memo I sent him. We're going to be doing that and I just, just to refresh your memory, if you remember on my first run. Uh, Leonard and, and Mac at the time, they were concerned about just what you mentioned. We had several very in-depth meetings with the D O, uh, text dot. And, uh, they were in my office. In fact, Leonard and Mac, well, we met and we talked to them. And, uh, it ended up with me sending letters to the entire, all, all the refineries. An actual letter telling them what we're going to be doing and it worked. Uh, it slowed down, we worked traffic. Uh, we, we made traffic enforcement, uh, an operation, uh, that operation very aggressively. We're going to do that again. Everything I just mentioned, we're going to do that. That's part of this phase in approach. To work commercial vehicle enforcement hazmat. They did tell me what they did and I, and I wanted to mention, uh, see right now. When they sat there with me and I don't remember the man's name, but he was the man in charge of the hazmat situation with text dot. He mentioned that the hazmat, the drivers of these vehicles. It's like their Bible. They know where they're not supposed to go. It's not like, you know, hey, I'm on duty, where can I drive? They live and sleep on where to go. When you're on the interstate, you see these hazmat signs and states hazmat, you know, the symbol. And it says must take, and it gives the route routes. So five nineteen, seventy, sixty-five, all these. This is not supposed to happen because they know it's part of their philosophy and rules of order. We did start working it. We made some cases. There's a sign on five nineteen when you come into Hitch, uh, from Hitchcock. There's one over there and one, you know, on the refinery side. So the question was, do we need all these signs? And he basically told me, this chief, you, you know, you're kind of wasting your money. You know, they're supposed to know this. It's just up to us to enforce it. You see what I'm saying? So we're going to do all this. It's going to happen. It's going to be phased in. We're going to take care of all those concerns.
And, and I wanted, Caesar, I wanted to be an official, you know, I, I hear chief saying, and I, I, I respect that. I heard, hear chief saying that, that it, it, it's going to be a policy. But I believe we need to have our, uh, our cruisers or vehicles outfitted with, with the designation of commercial. Uh, vehicle enforcement unit, traffic enforcement division. I believe that we need to be very direct.
Right.
Uh, and not only, here's the other thing I wanted to share with you. It's not only that they are potentially driving in, in places that they shouldn't drive, but. Commercial, uh, vehicle enforcement units can actually check other things on those commercial vehicles. Uh, and, and, uh, ticket.
Right.
Those, uh, drivers, uh, and those companies, if you will, for, for not, uh, being in compliance with. Laws and safety measures and things like that, that are specifically, uh, designed for, uh, commercial vehicles, right?
Yes.
So, so that's the other way we can, we can keep this, uh, community safe, but I want to make sure it's very open, very direct. And very, um, very deliberate. Um, but, but the other two things, uh, Caesar, that I wanted you, wanted you to share about, there are two questions that we've been talking about, you and I. Over the past three or four weeks. The first question came from a focus group. Um, that, um, that I had a chance to take, take a, a part in. Uh, and it was the idea that if our police officers, chief, you were, you were not here that day. If our police officers, uh, are actually responsible, the night officers are responsible for documenting faulty streetlights. Uh, or broken streetlights, or non-existent streetlights, if they document that. Where do they report that? And if, and, and, and the second question is, is there a way for the community to see which streetlights? Have been reported so that there isn't any confusion or even redundancy on those efforts?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so one of the things that we've learned, and this is, uh, probably works, it has brought this to our attention. Since we don't own our own streetlights, they're owned by the Texas Mexico or Center Point. We basically make a report and are told that it's being taken care of. So. What we need to do is do the trust but verify scenario where we need to make sure and double check that it is. So essentially what happens is PD or the public, anybody can make a report through request tracker or, or any method and say, hey. Such and such streetlight is out. That report either through PD, through the public, through myself, as y'all know, I, I drive lights, kind of my pet peeve, if you will. But I will, we will, we will make this report and we'll send it through public works. Our customer service, um, um, at customer service admin person that we have there, Ms. Lisa, takes that. Whatever through it, if it's through a request tracker, if it's a phone call, if it's an email, whatever it may be. Takes that information and compiles it and then puts it directly to which vendor it is. If it's a Texas Mexico or Center Point, she reports those and says, here you go. This has been reported as being out. What we failed to do that we are going about to start doing is we now we're going to have a live sheet.
Right.
That we're going to post on our website that will then be able to let people know this relights been reported. Your data report, expected time that's going to be completed. And then if it's not, it'll be on PD to make sure through whoever's on the night shift. To go through and double check that if it's, well, we fix in the fifteen days or two weeks or whatever the timeframe is, that it's done. If not, it will be re-reported to make sure that we do stay on top of it.
Mm-hmm.
So the question then is great, great that we will have a, a designated place. So will the reports that the police department make in their patrols? In other words, if they tonight. Identify a new street light that may have been damaged or that's out, they jotted down, they reported. Will their reporting of those lights appear on this larger document that shows?
Okay, yes, Mayor. So it's not so much of who's making the report, just, hey, such and such street light is, this is the one that's out. There's a location, here's where it is, and it's been reported.
Okay.
So that way, whether it's, it's, I report it, you report it, it's reported through request tracker, PD reports it. Even PD night crew, whoever's available fire, whoever reports it as being out. It'll go on this sheet and we'll keep that as a live document. We can find out at any given time how many lights are out. Why is that of importance? For example, right now we have roughly eleven hundred lights that we operate in our city. If we know we've got more than a hundred out, which thankfully we don't have anymore, we did at one point, then we know we're at ninety percent, you know, light. And then that can be our gauge where we are. We have a goal to be always above ninety-five percent.
Right.
Of whatever our total lights are. If we add a thousand lights, then whatever ninety-five percent of that would be.
Okay. Last thing I wanted you, you to explain, uh, and hopefully you have a policy associated with this. There has been a lot of complaints. Remember, we have to go back, uh, to this idea, and I'm, I'm saying this now in here, I'm, I'm going to make sure that I ask this as a request. If I don't, I'm asking it now to be on the next agenda. I have asked for, uh, Public Works to tell this council the three or four things that they do well. So that we can help steer, direct, train. And fund those things while assessing how we go about getting those other things accomplished. Through outsourcing. I said that to say. There is a huge, uh. Problem in our community, bless you. There's a huge problem in our community with illegal dumping. Uh, and. Items being left in the, uh, cities right of way, or even in the streets sometimes. Problem comes in when many of our community members see, uh, public works vehicles. Uh, who may be on their way to doing something really important and really vital to our operation. But the perception is they're passing by quite frequently. Items that are left in the cities right away, mattresses, chairs, cribs, tables, motors, whatever. I am asking that we develop a policy to address that, that. Perhaps there are certain times, certain days, certain periods, daily, weekly, I don't know, that's certainly your job. That we would as a, as a service, address those issues. Uh, is there an opportunity for public works to regularly periodically, and I don't mean once a quarter, once a month, I mean, at minimum weekly. Uh, to. Pick up some of those illegal dumping items that are especially in the cities right away.
Certainly, Mayor. And again, this is by no means an attempt at a policy yet. However, we did in our, um, memo here under the same item number, uh, ten nine, discuss that a little bit. And very, very briefly, this is not a public works thing. This is not one thing, it, it is going to be a joint effort and I'll tell you different reasons why.
Okay.
Um, first and foremost, anytime that any dumping occurs. Whether it's dumping, as you mentioned, trash left behind, whatever it may have been, the first thing we need to do is investigate if it was illegal dumping. So we've met with public works, we've met with code, we've met with, uh, um, PD. And first thing we need to do is investigate if it is, um, dumping or not. So we're going to check to see if it is a mattress or if it is a couch, if it has any mail in it, we can identify who may have dumped it, whatever the case is. Very quickly, very quickly check it, we're put gloves on, make sure that that's taken care of. If the dumping occurs in city right away, so here we go with the Venn diagram again, directly from there from PD, what that report is done and the investigation is quickly concluded. Either by them or by code, because code can also do this as well. We can identify whether it was illegal dumping or not. Quickly, then that will, that request we made to public works, so we can get that picked up within forty-eight to seventy-two hours. We do know that, again, we, we hope that it lasts even less than that. We, we, we were able to do things sometimes much faster. But that's the first thing. If, that's on public right away. If it is on private property. This is where now, again, we first check if it's illegal dumping. If there's no signs of illegal dumping, sadly, that now becomes a responsibility of the homeowner. If it is a homeowner or the property owner. At this point, we get our code enforcement involved. And we quickly make determination that yes, it was. We let the property owner know, you have this here and you have two options. You can get rid of it within this much, this X amount of timeframe, or we'll do it for you and here's what we're going to charge you X, Y, or Z. Then quickly, again, if we're going to do that, when public works, they're notified to get that done. At the draft, a verbal draft of the policy where it stands right now. We haven't had anything so aggressive, but here's what we have done before that's been somewhat aggressive. We had a problem with the shopping carts. Okay, i- it's been a problem for a while. Thankfully, knock on wood again, it's been about two months since we had that, that, that last wind of it. We haven't had a problem anymore because we went so extreme. We got with every single member of any store. And we told them, you have a, a responsibility to go pick up your shopping carts daily. If you don't and we get our hands on them, you can pick them up at the yard after seventy-two hours, we're tossing them. Those of you that don't know, shopping carts cost anywhere between eighty and a hundred bucks a piece. Guess what we've had no more problems with? No more shopping carts left out. Uh, same is true with tires. Obviously tires and illegal dumping of tires is a common thing across our country. Right? Illegal dumping of tires is the number one thing because there is a fee for discharging. We are working on getting those recycled. We get those brought into our yard on a regular basis. What has lately been the biggest issue is dumping of furniture, especially in the springtime.
And especially in certain areas.
Absolutely. Um, that's something that we need to address. We had a case this morning. We had two cases that we've dealt with since Thursday that PD's taking, PD through public works and code have, 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 you know, done to address. It was reported to us Thursday evening. It should have been done before the, the weekend, the week was over. It didn't get done until today. That's on me. Okay, I take responsibility for that because it was miscommunication amongst the staff and we all own that. And we understand that that's going to be corrected. That's what we have as of right now. We have certain ideas that we have embedded yet to be even more stringent, including surveillance in certain areas that are becoming hotspots. We have signage that's been ordered for illegal dumping to let people know that violators will be fined if caught. What we need to do is we also know that some residents. What we need to do is we also know that some residents do see this happening and don't say anything. Some property owners are allowing it to happen on their property. But then when they get cited, they want to say that it's not theirs. We will continue to be aggressive on that. I don't have more of a firm policy yet, but we are, we are very aware of it. PD is aware of it, public works are very, and we don't have anybody from code here today, fire is, is left. But we, we are all, all of us combined are working on that. We don't take that lightly. We will not allow this to be a dumping ground anymore.
So, so Caesar, here's, here's, great, 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 great work.
Ring camera.
Great work. Ms. Jancy said the ring cameras helps. Great, great, great work, Caesar. I get it. But here's the, the brass tacks of it. It's just as simple as. Making a, an effort. To not pass by illegal dumping. You gave us. A, a basically a scenario that says that you would see illegal dumping and then you would verify that it was illegal dumping and, and. And I get that. I understand that, that, that may be part of, part of your, your equation. But part of the citizens, our, our residence equation is it is a city right away. And there's stuff in it that don't need to be there. And we have people that we pay every day that ride by the stuff. That's in the city right away, that don't need to be there. And it appears that they're riding by. They're probably knocking down doors, Rick. They're probably doing a yeoman's job, but it appears as though. They're passing by items in the city right away that they could easily retrieve on their way to doing a bang up job. So if it's okay with you, I would like me one vote, one person. A policy that says that at some point on some day per week. Whether it's every day or whether it's every Thursday or Friday or whatever the day may be. That some portion of our operation ride through our major thoroughfares. Uh, and, and ride through, uh, those streets to see if they are in their daily ride, rather. Pickups, pick up some illegal dumping along the way. I don't know that they have to. Make an excursion or a different, uh, route or even designate a day as much as on Friday while we are going to our regular duties. If we see we are ordered to remove. It has to be consistent. And here's the other thing, the other theme tonight that I'm noticing that we have to change. Not only does it have to be consistent, but the responsibility has to be targeted. Along with the, the, the receptionist, you remember, well, supposed Suzie's going to answer it and Sally's going to answer it. And Rick might answer it if they don't answer it, but then Rick might be in a restroom. It's the same thing with this illegal dumping. There are a lot of people that are a part of your process. When really the people want one person, one group to be responsible for this task. Because if not, it'll fall through the cracks. I see Rick here ready to respond. Certainly, Rick. I, I, I would.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so I was just going to try to clarify a few things. So when we talk about right away and private property, it's a very, you know, defined line. By city ordinance, by law of the city, the property owner is required to maintain the right of way. Up to the center of the road, actually. So anything that sits off the side of the street is basically in right of way. We all understand that. The responsibility to maintain that right of way is actually up on the property owner. That's pretty common. That's, that's the law here in the city of Lamarck. That's the law in most cities. That's why they're required to cut the grass, pick up litter. Report illegal dumping. So if somebody drives by your house and dumps something out in front of your house, you can actually call in and. To the city and say, hey, somebody came by last night and dumped a couch in my, in my front yard, right? And that's, that's your concern. The city waste management offers a service for bulk pickup, which I believe they do every Friday. So a lot of people put items out on the right of way in front of their house. Which will be picked up on Friday, most cases by waste management, because that's when they do bulk pickup. Waste management won't pick up tires. We've, we've identified tires as a, a main subject for our staff to look out for. I saw one this morning and, and called it in. So we put everything on work orders. And that, and that tire was sitting on text out right away. A lot of the dumpings on text out right away. Um, that, that we see, I mean, that I see is probably more so on text out right ways than, than other locations. Um, and so that's an area we, we've, we're trying to concentrate better on as far as what, what you're saying, sir. As far as staff picking those items up, it's some, because text out is not. We know that. Ain't gonna happen. It's their right of way. And that right of way on text out, basically, if it's sitting out on somebody's property. Is basically back to the same laws of our city. That the maintenance of the right of way, whether it's text out right away or city right of way. Is a responsibility of the property owner that lives and joins by that right of way. That's, that's the law that's in the books for the city of Lamarck. So what we do is there's always the indiscriminate situation. We don't know if it's, maybe somebody put a desk out there for somebody to pick up. That they said, hey, I'll put it out in front of my house, come by and pick it up later. We have no idea. So we may not pick up an item right away, so we're going to just need some clarity, I guess. Because I've had my staff get. Reprimanded by, by citizens for like removing a bike out of a drainage channel. You know, they didn't think that they should be touching that. That's private property. The bike was, we took.
But the drainage channel was not.
There, there was a bike in a drainage channel.
But the drainage channel was not private property.
Technically, it's not. It's, it's in right of way again. So it's public property, right? Moving it as far as doing drainage work, right?
Right, right, right.
He got kind of reprimanded, yelled at by a resident. That happened to him back in. Those, those incidents don't happen much. So like I said, and then there is a cost, of course, we haul quite a bit of debris. Um, out of the city and there's a cost that goes back to the city for hauling that debris. Uh, through waste management. So those bills can get quite high. We don't actually have a budget line item in that right now. Um, that's something that, that we need to look at because we do haul quite a bit of debris, both wood debris, you know, natural brush debris. But also couches, tires, tires are three dollars each. We, we spend a few thousand dollars a year on, on, on getting rid of tires and we can't, they, they don't go away free. We pay for it. So those are all line item expenses that go back into the, and, and, and who pays for that is the citizens of Lamarck.
And, uh.
You know, it's, nothing's free.
If, if, if I can also calling attention back to the memo we have here. One of the things that we did is we are going to be, uh, having debris picked up on Mondays. That's when we go heavy on our stormwater maintenance. We know that a lot of the dumping, illegal dumping, wind tunnels, whatever happens, happens over the weekend. Usually Thursday to Mondays, that window, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Um, so we do know that during those times is where we're going to focus those efforts specifically on Mondays. We're looking at possibly adding a Friday if we can. But, uh, during those major thoroughths, uh, because that's where we hit mostly the hardest, our inlets and our drains. Through, through our stormwater team that we're compiling. And we're also going to make it a point that when we do pick up any debris within, within about a fifty foot radius of that, that we're also going to pick up. It's been instructed for every single, uh, truck to have a, a bucket and a pick stick in it. They all know that. I was screaming at the top of my lungs on Friday afternoon to make sure everybody had it in their truck as they were leaving the yard at seven thirty. Something that we don't take lightly. And like I mentioned, we're not going to tolerate. In addition to that, we do know that we're going to go into more in-depth education. I think we need to do more educating. I've challenged our code, our PD and our public works together, work together with our communication team to get more information out. A lot of folks are still to date not educated on what five cubic yards means and the fact that they need to consolidate their stuff better. Uh, so it's, it's not going to go away overnight. We're going to just keep going after this, uh, to try to eliminate these issues. Um, we have made it a. A effort that we need to do. This is going to be a team effort. It's going to be something that we're going to be relentless at. And every single person in our public works team and in our code and our PD has to be on the lookout for it because those are the folks that are out in the street. Some cities that are larger have a neighborhood services department who these, who would oversee kind of this, this operation. And, and in light of that, then we are overseeing that through our office, but to make sure that, that, that these independent teams handle those, those hotspots.
Just a quick question. Was, uh, during my service on Keep Lamarck Beautiful. We invested a significant amount of dollars on the, um, mobile. Uh, do not litter signs with a five hundred dollar fine. And this, uh, that's when Ms. Van Staveren was our coordinator with the Keep Lamarck Beautiful. And, um, in addition to that, we purchased, I want to say six cameras. That were used in conjunction to dumping sites that were identified by members of the commission. And, um, do you know, you guys still have those?
I know, I, there, there is signage. In fact, some of the signs got put on stop signs, which I've asked Jeff to take up, take off the stop signs. Because they, you can't have other sides on stop signs. Be, be as it may, we do have some other no dumping signs. And, and one of the things that, that we're trying to work together on with the police department is. Because the signs, the signs don't stop dumping, right? So where we have areas that are prone for dumping. Eventually, what's, and, and not, not to throw. Police under the bus, but enforcement's going to be needed. So I mean, at some point in time, we should be seeing either ticketing or, or some type of law enforcement. On people getting arrested or fined for dumping, you know, if we're enforcing the five hundred dollars. Because the, the sign just says it's five hundred dollar fine, but if you're not arresting.
No, we, we were forcing, we, we got a.
And I don't know what those numbers are, to be very honest with you.
Well, I, I'm just wondering if the.
But we, we have some of the signs, we.
I will find out about the cameras.
Out today, as a matter of fact.
It used to be kept partially in the little closet, right?
I'll find out about the cameras, but I will tell you that signage, signage is on the agenda for KLMBC on Wednesday. That I'll be attending the meeting to ask for that, um, as well as other support.
Let, let, let's do this. I want to make sure that we, we are, I have a couple more brief questions. You, one word answers, but I wanted to make sure that, that I'm saying what I personally, as one member of this council, want to see. I want to see a policy and I want that policy to Rick's point, to talk to us about. Uh, these, uh, roads that we don't own, the FM five nineteen's, the seventeen sixty-fives, the. Seventeen sixty-four's, highway threes. If these are the places that we will be aggressive. In, in these illegal dumpings in the right of ways. As opposed to maybe some of your more residential streets, if we're starting with the major thoroughfares. Because the wretched residential streets may have some issues with residents putting things out and we are confused about that. The policies should say we will on a regular basis, uh, mitigate illegal dumping in, on these streets. These major thoroughfares, right? Number two, I would like to see that that policy allow for documentation and reporting. In other words, if your crew.
Well, we will.
Picked up thirty-eight mattresses in the month of March, right? And fifteen bicycles, right? We need to have that as part, part of our report so that people can know that you are actually picking things up. So that needs to be part of the report.
And the dumping was on statistics that you saw tonight, but we can break that down. I believe we have shopping.
Let's, let's say how much we picked up and who picked, you know, not who picked it up.
It's just got work orders on.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we need to say we picked up fifteen bicycles and twenty-five big wheels or whatever we're going to say. So, uh. Also, so, so the state highways, the major there, the major, uh, you know, uh, highways. Um, any illegal dumping that is obstructing our drainage. I think that would be, that would be something that we would pick up, even if it's in somebody's yard. Uh, and then Caesar, again, documentation, documentation, documentation. I think that solves a lot of problems with people understanding how much we are actually picking up versus how much we're actually leaving out there. So that'll be, uh, a good place to start. Lastly, uh, two questions, very quick answers. Number one, who's ultimately responsible in our city? Uh, for, uh, illegal dumping, like if there's a case of illegal dumping, who goes to pick that up?
Picking it up would be public works.
Okay.
If it's not taken care of by the property owner when noted.
Okay.
Reporting, first report would be PD once, or code once they investigate if it is illegal dump. If we can prove that. Hey, the, the bookshop had a piece of mail in it that we were able to tie to such and such.
Okay.
And in that nature.
And if it's on a vacant lot, what happens?
It's on a vacant lot, then that property owner is identified that that, again, would be their responsibility or noted that that it is, and then we would take care of it. Through our public works.
Got you. I'm good. Any questions, any further questions for this item? Hearing none, uh, we will move, uh, past items for the good of the order. Because, uh, we move into requests and announcements, which is actually same thing. So. Uh, I believe we start tonight with Mr. Ross. Is it your turn, Mr. Ross?
I have no idea, but I'll go for it. It's late, it's tired. Um, I, personally, I want to shout out Officer Magg, Magic for, uh. Getting me a couple gallons of gas on Friday. Really kind of embarrassing to turn the corner around my house, car dies, but yeah, much appreciated. Uh, KLMBC Gold Star Award, rock on, love it. It happens. Other than that, that's pretty much all I got.
Ms. Jancy?
It's spring break, so stay safe. Uh, March is Women's International Month and also Passes Wives Month, so recognize the women in your life and your past's wife. Shout out to Hitchcock ISD for winning back-to-back, uh, basketball state championship. And as you know, a good number of our schoolchildren that live in Lamarck on, especially on the west side of forty-five. Go attend Hitchcock ISD, so hats off to them. Um, encouraging our fellow councilmen and our staff to attend the dinner Wednesday night. This Wednesday night, correct, for the councilman, mayors and mayors and city councils dinner. That's hopefully we can have a full house. That's this Wednesday. Um, I want to encourage, um, Gus to remind us of our code of conduct for our candidates in this election run. That, that, uh, the, the signatures that we sign and the code of ethics. That we, uh, all acknowledge that we're going to do so that we can have a peaceful, professional and intelligent campaign. Uh, season. Stop the Violence Week is April fifteenth through the twentieth. I'm encouraging everyone to attend. We start off with the leadership conference on Monday at College of the Mainland. And then, uh, two other days are tentative right now. We're to look into, uh, confirm the middle on the twentieth. Is when we'll have our basketball tournament and community fair. I do want to say that I was a very proud Lamarckian Wednesday at the State of the Cities. As our mayor probably gave, I believe, one of the best speeches that I've heard coming from the city of Lamarck. As he talked about the data and all the progress and the theme of that event was. Uh, it's sunny in Lamarck. And so I've ran into some of our fellow colleagues in other cities and that's what they look at me and say. It's sunny in Lamarck. So I thought that was really nice. And not only was it good, but the data, it was data-driven. So Mayor, hats off to you for representing us in a very good way and receiving a standing ovation. For all the good work that this staff and this administration has done in spite of the hostile territory. At times that they've had to deal with. It shows the resilience of our staff. It shows the endurance of this staff and other cities who are on the, who have undergone some of the same things, but in limited time. Are falling apart. But I will say that our directors, our staff, they're still here. And they're working hard and I hope that, that they have a team approach. And I want to share what team means. I got to find it though, Mayor. So I'm going to yield my time to someone else and come back to me before I can find it. Because it's a good thing. But I'm very proud to, it was, it was a good feeling, would you agree? To be in that room as you talked about, it's sunny in Lamarck. Come back to me.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all right.
Go, Joe.
Yeah, no, that, just briefly, I did want to extend my congratulations to, to, um, the, uh. The, the Hitchcock, uh, team that won the state championship. Uh, the mayor, Armicost, made a point of reaching out and, and I appreciate that and, and, uh. And, and uh, my congratulations, not only to the team members, but also the families. The families make that happen. Um, and that, that it's so important. And I want to pay tribute to, to mothers and fathers and some of them are, are single mothers and fathers that are out there uh, supporting the efforts of their kids in, in sports. And that's it.
Very good.
I just want to reiterate, be safe out there with spring break. The drivers out there are crazy. There's so much more traffic. Just be careful. And um, I know we skimmed over all the library activities and everything, but get your kids, grandkids, everybody involved because those are good programs.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay, I found what team means. I, I attended a conference two weeks ago and I just love this city manager. I want to share with your staff. Team stands for together, everyone achieves more. Team, again, together, everyone achieves more. And what she said in her speech that I was, that was so good. She said, all division divides. Period. All division divides. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Jancy.
I'm going to let you take that.
Thank you, Ms. Jancy. I wanted to uh, also uh, congratulate uh, the Hitchcock Independent School District for a state title because part of their school district is in the boundaries of the city of Lamarck, the great city of Lamarck. So we have yet another championship uh, for our residents to celebrate. But I wanted to also uh, remind us that that is not the only school district uh, in our city. Texas City Independent School District uh, is doing well. Uh, Texas City Lamarck, uh, if you will, Independent School District is doing well. Uh, as well as there is news uh, concerning the other school district uh, that uh, our residents uh, are involved with, assigned to, and that's the Santa Fe Independent School District. Uh, and from uh, Santa Fe, there is uh, news of a volleyball camp uh, from uh, the ages of kindergarten through ninth grade from June third through June sixth. The uh, registration deadline is May tenth. Uh, so we want to show equally uh, the activities of three of our four school districts. Uh, I don't know that anyone inhabits the Dickerson Independent School District as at this point in our, our city, but all three of our school districts are doing exceptionally well. Uh, oh, wait a minute, I forgot to tell you about the Lamarck powerlifting team.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I was, that's, that's where I was going with this. The uh, Lamarck, ladies Lamarck powerlifting team uh, recently recently went to the regional uh, championships. Uh, and three of them were uh, recognized. Uh, cherished elder, uh, second place. Uh, she's a state qualifier. Paula Melendez, fourth place and Navea McNair, fourth place. Again, all three of our school districts uh, are being active and doing quite well uh, in our community and beyond, beyond. I wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Shannon Bro for his acceptance into the uh, Water Leadership Institute. Uh, secondly, I wanted to again reiterate that our city uh, it's sunny in Lamarck. We went from a time, uh, Ms. Jackie, that there was over sixty percent water loss. Sixty percent of our water was going wherever. We are now under forty percent. Everything is relative and everything needs to be put in context. Uh, it is not dark days in Lamarck. Uh, that fact alone would suggest it's sunny in Lamarck. Third, I wanted to remind you that this week, I believe Thursday, myself uh, communications slash deputy city manager, Mr. J B Pritchett, as well as city manager, Mr. Caesar Garcia, will have an extended version of our State of the City address uh, broadcast uh, on all of our platforms. And we will simply go through every department, highs, lows, challenges from an elected uh, official uh, perspective, from a perspective of, of myself who represents uh, our community from, from the electoral process. But also from the perspective of the city manager, who is the uh, CEO, the uh, day-to-day chief of our operations. And so we will have those discussions. If I were you, I would not miss it. Because it will help us to understand our accomplishments, but also our challenges. Uh, it will help us to understand what we should and should not uh, be focusing on as we move forward into twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Lastly, I would like, and this is a request, this has happened several times. Ms. Nance, I need from you a calendar that would allow for ample time for our submission to the newspaper or the publication of record. Apparently we need more time. And so if we are, if we're using a ten-day window, fifteen-day window, I don't know what that window is. But apparently at this stage in our operation, as well as the operation of the Galveston Daily News, we need more time. So if you would uh, for this council's uh, ratification on next agenda, provide for us a detailed timeline on how your office plans on going about making sure our postings are in Galveston Daily News's uh, hands uh, with enough time for them to post. I would certainly appreciate it. This council would act and accept that and direct you further. Could you do that for us, ma'am? Thank you very much. That's all I have. Counsel, do we have anything else? Mr. Garcia?
Fair, thank you. Long meeting, long day. Thank you all for your patience and time and support and we'll be continuing forward.
Very good. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.